Good evening. Please take your seats. I'd like to welcome you to the July 27, 2010, meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call, please?
Council members, Freeman.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Quintero.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Here. Councilmember Friedman, would you lead us in the flag salute?
Absolutely. I invite you to rise and join me in renewing our pledge to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. Yesterday, by presidential proclamation, President Barack Obama declared today, July 27, 2010, National Korean War Veterans Armistice Day. Quoting from the proclamation, "Today we celebrate the signing of military armistice agreement at Panmunjom, and we honor our service members who fought and died for freedom and democracy in the Korean War. This year marks the 60th anniversary of the start of the Korean War and the birth of an enduring friendship between the United States and the Republic of Korea that is stronger today than ever before." End quote. Let us take this opportunity to pray for and give thanks to those who lost their lives and those who came back home from what has been tragically referred to by our historians as the forgotten war. Must always remember those who fought for the freedom of the Korean people. Today, as we see an escalation in the bellicose stance and continued oppressive rule of North Korea, we should be even more grateful to the brave men and women who volunteered their service to defend freedom and democracy. Let us honor them today, as does our entire nation, and ensure that their sacrifice will not be forgotten. Amen.
May we have your report, please?
The agenda for the July 27, 2010, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was postponed Thursday, July 22, 2010, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And what's next?
Next at presentation appointments is 3A, Agenda Preview for the Meetings of August 3, 2010.
Ms. Beers.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for the Glendale Housing Authority and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency, there are no business agenda items. We do have a Glendale City Council meeting, a special meeting, at 2:30 PM next week because of National Night Out, which will be starting at 6:00 PM. So our regularly scheduled council meeting at 6:00 PM will be at 2:30 in the afternoon. We have a number of consent items that evening. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, Rockhaven Exploratory Well; Director of Information Services, Maintenance of the City's Public Safety Radio Communications Infrastructure; City Clerk, this is legal advertising contract for the city of Glendale. Under action items, we only have two items: General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, Water System Capital Improvement Program for fiscal year 2010, 2011; and the City Attorney regarding findings regarding granting appeal by GNS Transit Management, City Cap. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And again, to just repeat, it's going to be a 2:30 meeting because we'll be heading out to the National Night Out sites in the evening. The next item, please.
Next item at 3B is Presentation of One Book, One Glendale.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the library is very happy today to come once again and talk about One Book, One Glendale, 2010, which is our citywide reading event. We try to encourage the people of Glendale to come together, read one book at the same time, discuss it together in book groups that will meet throughout Glendale, attend programs relating to the themes of the book, and then meet the author of the book. We have two components for one book. We have one book for adults, and we have one book for younger readers. We really have two goals for one book, One Glendale. One is, of course, to celebrate the joy of reading, the power of literature, and, of course, the importance of literacy. But the other goal is to bring the people of Glendale together, to bring our diverse community together through the sheer act of reading one book at the same time and coming together and discussing it. When people are talking about one book, they're not just talking about ideas, they're talking about their beliefs and their backgrounds and their experiences. And through that shared conversation, they're coming together as a community. You know, when we started the program four years ago, and this is our fourth One Book, One Glendale, we had no idea how it would take off. Last year, we had more than 4,000 people participate by reading one book. And our participants aren't just individuals. We work with groups, we work with Glendale Unified, Glendale Community College chooses our one book as their campus-wide read, and this year, we're also working with the Glendale Historical Society. It's a really wonderful program. We get people involved, we get them reading, and we're very proud of this program. And I'd like to present Teresa Robinette, who's going to talk about our one book for younger readers.
Hi. Part of our goal is to get the kids reading for recreation, to let them see that reading can be fun. So in to further that aim, this year, we have chosen Amulet by Kazuki Buishi. He's a local Southern California author, and it's a graphic novel. It's a great story. It's a family story. It's an adventure where the father is, they think, killed, and the mother's distraught, takes the kids to her family home, and she's kidnapped. The kids have to grow up immediately and go off and have, through this fantasy world, and rescue mom. So it's a good fast read, and I think the kids are really going to like it. We're having a book discussion group on October 27 for the kids and their parents. The author will be at the library November 18. And on November 20, we're having a draw-your-own-graphic novel workshop for the kids. So it's going to be a great program this year. Thank you.
Today, we're presenting the books and authors. We'll encourage people all during summer and into fall to read the book. We'll do the programs in fall, and the authors will be here in late fall. Now, we're doing something different this year we've never done. We have never had a Glendale author as our one-book author. And our one book, which you have in your hand, Los Angeles Noir, your gift copies are courtesy of the Friends of the Glendale Public Library, is by Denise Hamilton, who is a longtime Glendale resident. She is a regular user of the Glendale Public Library. She is, she worked for the Los Angeles Times, and I learned something about Denise yesterday. Part of her beat when she worked on the Los Angeles Times was the Glendale City Council. So I'd like to present Denise Hamilton.
Good evening. Yes, I write, I went from being a journalist for the LA Times to writing crime novels, very much inspired by my years covering the mean streets of LA County. Los Angeles Noir is a really interesting and wonderful choice by your librarians because it's got something for everyone. It's not a novel, it's an anthology of short stories by different authors, and I was the editor. I've got a short story in there. But I was asked by the publisher to pick 17 local LA authors who would write a short story in kind of the noir tradition, and by that, I mean the, think about the movies that were made of the Raymond Chandler and the Ross McDonald and all of the wonderful film noirs that you might remember where Humphrey Bogart is wearing the fedora and he's smoking a cigarette and he's going off to solve a crime, and there's a femme fatale. Well, the idea was to take that kind of noir 1940s glamour and grit and bring it up to date to the 21st century in all the different neighborhoods of LA. And so the stories really reflect the diversity of the city today, and there are stories by Japanese-American authors, by Guatemalan-Americans, there are stories about the immigrant Chinese community, the members of the Filipino community, there's a story set in a Korean day spa where something goes wrong. And the authors are really a wonderful mix of literary authors and well-known mystery authors, such as Michael Connelly. And Pat Morrison of the LA Times wrote her first piece of fiction for this collection and set a short story in Beverly Hills, The Old Quiet Money Versus the Vulgar New Flashy Money. Susan Strayed is also in the anthology. She's a wonderful literary author who was a finalist for the National Book Award, and this collection actually won the Edgar Allan Poe Award two years ago for Best Short Story. So Janet Fitch is also in the collection. She wrote White Oleander, which was an Oprah pick and was made into a movie. These are brand-new stories that were written especially for this collection. They've never appeared in print anywhere else. And some people will like one more than the other, but our hope is that everyone will find a conversation to have about the collection and how it reflects life today in contemporary LA County. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we look forward to all of you reading and maybe coming to some of our programs and our book groups. Thank you very much.
And we can officially start reading the novels and the graphic novel. I used to call that something else when I was a child, but...
But now there's a little more.
More in depth, there's more of a plot line, okay. And I won't tell you, young people, what I'm talking about. You'll have to get the book and start reading it. Next item, please.
Next item at 3C is Lose a Ton in 10 Program.
Thank you, Mari Abrams.
Hi, Mayor Najarian, and City Council members, thank you all so much for the opportunity for us to be here to talk to you about the Lose a Ton in 10 Program. My name is Mari Abrams from Glendale Adventist Medical Center, and this is Landon Bennett.
Hello.
My colleague from Glendale Adventist Medical Center. Together, we're going to talk to you just for a few minutes about the Lose a Ton in 10 Program. It's a free weight loss challenge to the community of Glendale. We want to encourage people to obviously, together, lose 2,000 pounds in the year 2010. We did this program because, as most of you know, obesity is the biggest risk factor for health conditions, and it's one of the easiest, easiest, it's difficult, one of the things that we actually can control and change and that can affect our health in a positive way. And also, the Surgeon General recently came out and has asked hospitals to step up their challenge to the community, step up their efforts to help people lose weight in their communities. We're coming to you today because we want people to restart their efforts. I know it's been seven months, almost eight months now, some people made their New Year's resolutions to lose weight, and we want to help people kickstart and restart their weight loss goals. We already have 200 people signed up, and together, they've lost over 700 pounds. Obviously, we're a little bit behind our goal, but we're coming here to encourage the city of Glendale and to let everyone know about a fantastic partnership that we have with the city in this event. I'm going to have Landon talk a little bit more about the Lose a Ton in 10 Program itself.
Thank you very much. So this is not only just a weight loss program, it's also a fundraiser because as we're challenging the Glendale community, for every pound lost by someone in the community, Glendale Adventist is going to donate a dollar, up to $2,000, to Glendale healthy kids. And they've really been a great partner with us, along with All About You Wellness Bootcamp. Together, it's a free weight loss program that people can sign up for, and some of the benefits for this is that you report this yourself to us, you don't have to go and weigh in front of a whole crowded people, but we offer those opportunities at different places in the city. Every month, there's a weight loss station somewhere. We've done it at Lululemon and the Americana at the hospital. I think we did it at Massage Envy. So we're really trying to find partners in the community to help us promote this program. Once people sign up for it, they become enrolled in a program. We shoot them weekly emails, they give them like exercise tips, nutrition tips. They get this whole network of support of other people who are on that same journey with them. They get invitations to free seminars that we had at the hospital, where they get a free dinner and learn about eating healthfully. And so we're just really encouraging the people that if they've made a decision to lose weight and start getting on that healthy, healthy path, that they can come and sign up. We're clear, it's very easy to do it. We just send them all to our Glendale Adventist site, glendaleadminist.com/loseatone.
Thanks, Landon. So we wanted to specifically give a big thanks to Mayor Najarian for encouraging us and allowing us to talk to Monica Fisher and the Employee Health Services. She has provided us with an opportunity to get this information out to city employees and really encourage them to be a part of this program. She is providing city employees with any additional support if they want to meet with her and talk to her about nutrition services and any fitness planning that they may want. She's made herself available to help them, which is just fantastic. So thank you very much. And really just want to encourage the community out there to get involved in the program. We have information about it here in case you know anyone that you think might be interested in this fun program.
Great. That's excellent. Thank you for bringing it to our Health Services Department, and...
Thank you.
Healthy employees are happy employees.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Ms. Kasakian?
Next on the agenda is City Council and Staff Comments.
Hey, Mr. Weaver.
Just a comment. It's about bicycle riders. I bring it up because my wife has also complained about some of the dangerous move bicycle riders are making. You should understand the rules of the road. What scared me a week ago was going east on Wilson at Chevy Chase. I was going to make a left-hand turn. I'm in the intersection, the light is yellow, it turns red, so I was going to make the turn. But coming westbound in the traffic lane was a bicyclist with a helmet on, going as fast as he could. I thought I'd wait to make sure he's going to stop. He did not. He came right through the intersection, the red light, aimed right at me, swung around into the ongoing lane the other direction, and went, kept going. If I had made the turn like I was legally able to do, I would have killed him. There's no doubt in my mind, he was dead. So I hope all bicyclists will remember that you can't win when it's you against a car. Try to obey the rules. There's more bicycle riders, which is great, but look out for those cars and follow the rules of the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Ms. Quintero?
Talk about a few of the events we attended this weekend, starting with the Clean and Beautiful Glendale. The Association of Volunteers that are more or less headed by Sam Engel. I think he's the person that does most of the supervising, but they do such a great job. I mean, there's literally so many different things that this committee does, and it's too long to list. But anyway, they had the new swearing-in ceremony and talked about some of the accomplishments in the, in the past year, but very active committee. Their volunteers, they work well with the staff at Neighborhood Services, and doing a really good job. Then the second event was the Verdugo Woodlands Homeowners Association had a fundraiser for the banners for the veterans that are on Broadway, Glendale, et cetera, for the returning Glendale veterans. I think they raised quite a bit of money. And then finally, Sunday evening, the Armenian Bone Marrow Project celebrated their 10th anniversary, and they've been expanding not only in Armenia but in other countries in the world where there are large Armenian populations. They have a presence here in Glendale. So three great, three great events here in the city of Glendale.
I just have a few comments. I also attended the Armenian Bone Marrow Donor Anniversary with Mr. Quintero. This is a...
And me.
Oh, and, I'm sorry, and Ms. Friedman. And she was there even despite her husband's birthday celebration.
His 50th. Happy birthday, Keom.
And what it is, as its name describes, is a donor registry. And it's not only for Armenians, because Armenians have a certain unique set of DNA, but also encouraging people to get involved with the National Bone Marrow Donor Registry. And the more people who register and do the simple test of simply swabbing your cheek and getting typed for your DNA, the more potential lives can be saved with various different types of cancer, primarily leukemia. So I encourage everyone either to, if you're Armenian, you can go to the Armenian Bone Marrow Donor Registry. Actually, even if you're not Armenian, you can. All those, all those DNA results and typings are funneled into the national registry and actually international as well. So it's a, it's a great cause and a great way to possibly save someone's life. On Wednesday, Wednesday evening, I attended the Gathering of Intellectuals. What am I talking about? I attended the Glendale Bar Association Summer Mixer. It was great seeing a lot of the local attorneys and the judges came out, the DAs and the public defenders, and Scott Howard and many of his staff was there. And you should, you should get to know an attorney, you never know when you might need one. And the other, I guess the other question I want to raise is, you know, there was an accident this morning on the 210 freeway involving a semi-trailer, I believe it was a hit-and-run.
The individual was running from the median to the side and got hit.
The, I guess the point is that, I think that the facts of the accident are still unclear, but the fact is that if the 710 tunnel gets put through, you're going to see a dramatic increase in the number of trucks there and a, also an additional number of traffic accidents, regardless of whether it's a driver's, a motorist's fault or a freight truck hauler's fault. I think we need to continue the community's awareness of the 710 tunnel and to continue working to make sure that the county invests in smart and sustainable freight transportation and freight delivery from the ports to the northern part of the state and the western There's no other comments? Anything from staff? Mr. Kasakian?
I believe we have an announcement about National Night Out.
Oh, we do. We do. Mr. Kelly...
Anis. Anis.
Yes. Or a, or a member of our police force.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Staff.
Oh, Kelly.
My name is Officer Kelly Anis. I'm affiliated with the Glendale Police Department's Community Policing Unit. Myself and other members of the department are working very hard, but mostly with community members, to have and celebrate the National Night Out, which will be August 3, from 6 to 8 PM. We are grateful, the council has recognized the significance of this event and gone to great lengths to accommodate the hours and time for the importance of this event. This year will represent the 27th annual event of this nature. The purpose for doing this is basically for the good people of the community to manifestly be outdoors and celebrate, either through a barbecue in the residential area, attend an event, or go for a walk through the neighborhood. The good people of the community saying no to crime. If I can just share just a brief little story. My partner here, Officer Zakarian, provided some training up in Montrose. I'm assigned to the west area, from Brand West to Alameda. I had put out some feelers for community members, anybody interested in wanting to do this, we were planning to do our west training. These six ladies were so motivated, they say, well, let's not wait, let's go up to Matt's training up in Montrose. Well, they came back all on fire, and they wanted to do this. And they didn't know what to do. They said, well, what do we do next? What do we do next? So then we, quickly doing all this training, and I saw these ladies go from absolute state of motivation but confusion to working together, brainstorming, coming up with flyers, which they then handed out to their neighbors. Each person handed out flyers to all of their residential neighborhoods for the people that I'm working with. Every one of them are now going to have basically a front yard barbecue with their neighbors. National Night recognizes, and I believe is real in the city of Glendale, that the majority of the people in the city of Glendale are really good people. However, many good people are very shy, and if I was to ask everyone in this room, how many people know the names of all their neighbors, we would be shy to answer that question, I think. What this facilitates, they, each one of them have gotten positive responses. It's going to be a potluck. They're going to set up carved tables and lawn chairs, it'll be a couple of signs up and balloons, National Night Out event. Any other-than-nice people that drive by will see this, that, oh my gosh, all these people on the street are saying no to crime, and they are celebrating this event. Part of the process is that they are exchanging emails and have already developed a name recognition, have exchanged emails, and then they will be sharing food. The long and short of it is that, as now the people know their neighbors and have a relationship with us, we can provide them with additional training, year-long, for Neighborhood Watch and for crime bulletins, to say if we have outstanding suspect descriptions or whatever of crimes that are being committed, and we build these relationships up with them. And as you read in the paper a couple weeks ago, the knock-knock burglars, it was quick-thinking, reasonable, good people in the community who recognized bad behavior, they called the police to where the people, the bad guys were. They provided the descriptions. And we believe that through this National Night Out event, it will proclaim to the community that we are, in fact, a good population, giving this message out. And secondly, we hope to extract a long-term relationship of Neighborhood Watch, people taking care of each other, and reducing ultimately the crime in the community and better quality of life for all. I have another gentleman here, Todd Hunt, would like to say something.
Thank you, Kelly. Mayor Najarian, Councilmembers, thank you. I guess I am kind of the civilian base of National Night Out, and have been partnering with Kelly, with Matt Zakarian over there, working with, kind of on the civilian side to get neighborhoods engaged in this program for National Night Out. They've got up on the screen up there, the website, and if people can go to www.glendaleno.com, we've got 27 community events ready to go for next Tuesday night. And we want to encourage everybody out there to find an event in your neighborhood and show up, get to meet your neighbors, learn more about Neighborhood Watch, because again, the police can't do it all themselves. They need us out there in our own communities, taking responsibility for our communities and being the eyes and ears. And again, if we see something that doesn't quite fit in our neighborhood, then we can call in our police officers to take a look, so that we are trying to strive to have safe communities with no crime and no drugs. But again, they can't do it themselves, and we, as individuals and citizens in Glendale, need to take responsibility and take our part of this process so that we can have a safe city. So that's what this is all about. So again, we encourage everybody to go out there next Tuesday night from 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock, find a place to meet your neighbors, and we'll all work together and have a safe community. So thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you. Officer Zakarian, any final comments?
No, Mayor Najarian and Councilmembers, City Staff, thank you for having us, and I know you guys have gone, moved up your meeting for next Tuesday, and I appreciate you guys coming out. And 27 events is a lot. If we can get as many people out there and hitting up as many events as possible, that'd be great. The community's reaching out, and they want to meet with the city, different departments and the police department, and work with the city staff.
That's great. And as I understand it, many of the homeowners associations and neighborhood groups have sent out invitations and flyers to many of the residents within those areas. So if you have received something in your mailbox, inviting you to either an ice cream social, or a barbecue, or a meet and greet, that's what everyone's talking about. So you're invited to go there, and the point is to get to know your neighbors, and your neighbors are probably your best defenders of your own property, should there be an unusual occurrence, whether it's a knock-knock neighbor, or, excuse me, a knock-knock bandit or robbery... A knock-knock joke. Or a knock-knock joke, or even fire issues or safety issues, should something happen to you at home and you not be seen around for a while. So you're getting your invites, and every... So you're getting your invites and everyone is expected to be there. I know that all of us on council are going to try and make as many of these different sites as we can. We might not make all of them, all of us, but we're going to do our best. But the important thing is, not that we're there, but the neighbors in the community attend and get to know one another. Thank you very much. Mr. Kasakian, anything else?
No.
Okay. Let's move on to the next item.
Next item is, I apologize. Next item is consent items, including minutes. Following a routine that may be acted upon by one motion, any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed. And there was one card submitted to remove 5D from the consent calendar.
Okay, we will be pulling 5D. Mr. Weaver.
I'll move the remainder of the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Aaron Najarian?
Yes, 5D, please.
5D is Director of Public Works Regarding Street Repair and Rehabilitation Project, Phase One Chevy Chase Drive, Spec. #3371. A D1 is a motion approving amendment to the construction contract between the City of Glendale EC Construction, Inc. and EC Instruction, Inc. and in an amount not to exceed $257,000 for unforeseen conditions and design changes.
Mike Mohill.
You're doing D, right?
5D.
D.
E like David.
Good, okay, I'll make correct. Thank you. Mayor Najarian, my name is Mike Mohill. Again, I'm happy the city is repairing our streets. It's always nice to see the streets torn up for repairs, like you know when they're going to tear up Glen Oaks Boulevard. I've been waiting, waiting, waiting. They keep telling me we're on the calendar. I've been living in Glen Oaks Canyon for 32 years and I've never seen Glen Oaks Boulevard torn up. I live on Ashburton Place and it was torn up 32 years ago when I first moved in. We keep falling behind in our street maintenance. What does it take to have our streets maintained on a timely basis? I don't want to look like Los Angeles. I want to look like Glendale. You know, we talked about the quality of life tonight. I believe street maintenance should be there. After all, nothing looks nicer than to go down a nice residential neighborhood and see resurfaced roads rather than potholes. I look at La Canada Boulevard. Once upon a time, that was a beautiful area. It still is. But you know what? It even looked nicer if we resurfaced La Canada Boulevard. Same thing with my street, East Glen Oaks Boulevard. Should like to know when my neighborhood's going to be resurfaced. Thank you. It'll help our quality of life.
Q. I have no other cards. Mr. Weaver. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Aaron Najarian?
Yes. Next item.
Next item would be oral communications.
This is our three-minute portion of oral communications for announcements of general public interest. First speaker is Jim Reichelt, followed by Leon Mayer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members. Council members, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jim Reichelt and I am the recently installed Chairman of the Committee for Clean and Beautiful Glendale. I thank Mr. Quintero for the comments he made concerning attending the dinner along with Ms. Friedman installing the new officers. I'm here this evening with one of the lighter items on your agenda, and thanks to Mr. Engel. He said I had about 10 to 15 minutes. Seriously, I'm here to invite you and your friends, neighbors, and the viewers to attend the sixth annual Glendale Summer Night on the Plaza. And that's this Thursday, two days, two nights away, 6:00 p.m. at our plaza right here between City Hall, the building on the stilts, and the Perkins Center. It's an annual fundraiser for the Committee for Clean and Beautiful Glendale, and it starts at 6:00. There'll be a very large silent auction, live entertainment. We'll have the Glendale Photo Contest, two winners, both color and black and white. There'll be food from 19 of Glendale's best restaurants in town. And for all that, it's up $20, which again is a fundraiser, much of it is a donation for the activities and projects that Glendale Clean and Beautiful and Neighborhood Services puts on each year. The adults are $20 and children, 5 to 12, are $7. Parking will be through in the city parking lot and or off of Wilson. The proceeds will benefit the environmental education, community beautification, and graffiti removal programs operated by the Glendale Clean and Beautiful Committee. And that's just a part of the many things that that committee does. Thank you for allowing me to be before you begin this evening.
Thank you. Leon Mayer.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the council staff. My name is Leon Mayer. I'm here for the library and the friends at the library. And my first announcement concerns this Thursday's program at the Central Auditorium, 7:00. We're lucky to have Leslie Bilderbeck, a certified master baker, who will talk about her book, The Complete Idiot's Guide to Various Types of Cooking. She will also talk about her career. She worked her way through college as a waitress and a chef. She eventually has books from New York to Hawaii and into the Library of Congress. That's how famous she is. She's also started a adopted chef program in which she goes on Navy ships to teach people how to properly invest, serve the people that eat their food. So that's 7:00 Thursday. We're hoping you can make it. It's free and start at 7:00. Now, I wanted to, for the last time, talk about the new library card program. We're having new cards issued. You can turn in your old card or you can just go to the library for the first time and get a card going back to Glendale history, like Bob Hope's trip to Glendale or the Bob's Big Boy's trips to Glendale to the Rose Bowl float. And we also will have the time that the famous Albert Einstein came to look at the Glendale Rose Bowl float as well as the old airport we had here over on San Fernando Road. So those are the upcoming events we're having. I also want to echo what Frank Quintero has been promoting, that is the Studio Guy Tour, which was a great success. And for those who don't know it, the tour will continue in a sense at the Brand Library up until next month, first of the week of next month, when the finest, the best paintings of the various authors who had their displays on will be on display at the Brand Library. So that's basically where we're at. Do I have a minute left or 30 seconds left? I want to take a little pride in the fact that I met Denise Hamilton here in Glendale about 15 years ago. We brought her to Kiwanis, we brought her to the Glendale Library, and she's really going to add to the One Book One Glendale event later on in the year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Richard Lee, followed by Mr. Friesen, Nick Friesen, and Al Hoffman is number three.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, city staff. My name is Richard Lee. I've been a Glendale resident for 38 years and I've lived 31 years on Penn Shore Terrace in the Royal Canyon area. So I'm here to talk to you tonight about a mansionization project that is being planned for our neighborhood. There is a project on Stewarton Way, a street right above ours, where a house replacement...
Mr. Lee, I'm getting some input from the city attorney and the clerk. This is generally not...
Mr. Mayor, that was actually my mistake. That card should have been in the five-minute portion. They are on time constraint and I had to request the three minutes, but I explained to them that we have a five-minute portion as well. The cards must have gone into the wrong pile. I apologize.
Okay, so we had a mix-up at the...
I'll come back.
...delivery department of these cards. So we'll be calling you at the conclusion of the meeting and you will have five minutes, each of you, to discuss this issue. Okay, I don't have any other cards, or do I, Mr. Kasakian, for the three minutes?
Not for community announcements unless...
Okay. I don't see any. Let's move on to the next item, but let's take, let's take something out of order. Let's take number nine, if we could. I don't think we have any cards on that and we can release some of our fire department staff earlier.
Certainly. At nine, under hearings, at 9A is Fire Chief Regarding Weed Abatement Charges, 2009, 2010. At 9A1 is a resolution confirming weed abatement charges.
I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there someone who'd like to either... I don't have any cards on number nine currently still.
Can we hear anything?
Okay, I have no cards. I will, this is setting forth the charges that are assessed, homeowners or property owners, for the clearance of the brush and weeds in accordance with LA County Fire...
County Agricultural Commission, yes. This is to confirm the charges.
We do this every year. This is a fly step.
Sir, could you be closing the public hearing? No, this is not the other type.
No, this is the normal type of weeds and noxious brush.
Although we did have that problem in the foothills two summers ago. Is there, and I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Move 9A1.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Aaron Najarian?
Yes, thank you. Now, let's go back to the regular order of business.
Action item 8A is Director of Human Resources Regarding Resolution Amending the Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, between the City of Glendale, the City and the Glendale Management Association, GMA, representing sworn fire managers. And at 8A1 is a resolution approving amendment, number one to the MOU.
Mr. Doyle.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm very pleased to present this resolution amending the Memorandum of Understanding between the GMA and the City of Glendale. This says, the GMA as they represent the fire sworn managers. As you know, we've dealt with some very severe budgetary factors in the past few months and part of our efforts to reduce costs have been to solicit our support from our respective employee associations. And we've done so with pretty much all of our groups. And as you recall, a few weeks ago, we had a amendment to our Memorandum of Understanding between our Firefighters Association and the City of Glendale. This time around, we're doing almost a very similar type of amendment to the GMA contract as it relates to the fire sworn managers. Those are our managers in the classifications, primarily a fire battalion chief. This proposal has a extension of our existing contract and what it does, three primary things to reduce costs. The first being the foregoing of a scheduled salary increase, previously negotiated cost of living increase that would have taken effect in 2011, pushing that back to 2013. The second component of that would be increasing the per's cost-sharing component, currently at 1.5%, where the employees are contributing their own money towards the retirement, increasing that to 2% effective January of 2011. Third component of that would be implementing a second-tier retirement of going from the 350 plan to the 355 plan, also effective January 1st of 2011. This proposal, albeit only affecting a small number of our managers, will save in the neighborhood of about $100,000 over the course of this existing contract. We are very pleased, obviously, with the concessions that have been offered here and we hope you do approve this resolution amending the MOU. And I do want to recognize we have our chief here, Chief Skoggins, as well as the president and vice president of the Management Association, along with the battalion chief, Tom Probst, also representing the Glendale Management Association. That, if you have questions.
Mr. Starbuck.
Mr. Mayor, as I noted last week, when you considered the Memorandum of Understanding with the Glendale Firefighters Association, we had to then give considerable credit to the leadership in the fire department for, really, in conjunction with the GFFA, really stepping up to the plate. And I think the past month with the issues that we have seen unfold in another Southern California city, where you see the worst of greed and avarice in the public sector, this is exactly the opposite and I think represents a model of how public employees, I think most of them do behave and should behave in contributing to help solve problems like the ones that we in this city is facing California. So I can't say enough again about the GFFA and the GMA and the firefighters and managers in the fire department.
Mr. Quintero.
Yeah, I pretty much want to say the same thing. Thank the managers for voluntarily giving up the raises and so forth. And of course, the firefighters, a rank and file that were the first in the city this year and last year to give up all of the benefits due under a contract that they negotiated a few years ago.
Right, I have two cards and I can come back to my colleagues after they speak. Herbert Milano and then Mike Mohill.
Thank you, Mayor Najarian, members of the city council and city staff. My name is Herbert Milano. There is a growing burden, as the city manager recognized today with regard to cities and how they're being impacted today by both the increases in salaries, pensions, benefits, overtime of city employees, and the burden that the residents have in trying to meet the burden that cities impose on them with regard to additional taxes and fees to support those increases. So I brought with me a chart that shows for safety employees, and I know that the MOU deals with the management of safety employees, but I want to basically, would like to request that the city bring to the general public information that is clear and relevant with regard to the trends and the averages that the city is paying with regard to management. Here, for example, you can look at information that I derived from one of the consulting reports that you receive with regard to CalPERS. And this chart represents the Glendale Police and Fire Average Base Wages. You would notice that starting in 1998, the increases have been quite substantial, always increasing, always regardless of the level of the economy, downturns in the economy, unemployment or anything. Now, this particular chart does not include the overtime and of course, it does not include the benefits which you negotiated and presented last month. Here is my point, is that we need this kind of transparency and this kind of presentation so that the general public truly understand if these organizations are truly giving up anything with regard to their pay or their benefits. This particular agreement locks in this particular MOU for several years. That means that anyone running for office next year or two years after that and any potential council members will not have a say-so with regard to this type of agreements. I think that agreements should be done on a yearly basis so that you have an opportunity to adjust to the way the economy performs. Locking this type of agreements in for prolonged periods of time causes the type of problems that you have now having to figure out how to resolve. It is my belief that we need to have open negotiations, open to the general public. There is no reason that I can think of as to why this negotiation should be done behind closed doors, and I think that the public needs to be aware of the kind of justification that you use when you come up to agreements that eventually going to cost the City of Glendale millions upon millions of dollars in additional payroll. Thank you very much.
Mike Mohill. Mike Mohill.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Name is Mike Mohill, long-term resident of Glendale. I forgot my mirror at home today. It's called Smoke and Mirror. That's what we have here. City council members receive union money and then they vote on their pay raises and adjustments. It's nothing but smoke and mirror. I see over here we're going to say, wow, $99,428. Wow, according to the final impact of this report, it's right here. People ask me, how come they can't retire at age 65 like everybody else? Someone says to me, what's because of CalPERS? I don't know. Maybe Mr. City Attorney can tell us, tell the public, why can't city employees retire at age 65 like the rest of us in the private sector? I don't claim to be an expert on CalPERS, but people keep asking me, why do they retire at 55 and I have to retire at 65? What do they have? Oh, I forgot, they have a union and we don't have unions. In fact, 90 percent of the working force today does not belong to a union and the 10 percent that does belong to government unions. There is a revolt going on in this country right now. City of Bell was just the beacon, the beacon in this city. And, you know, you can say, we spoke, you doted over the firefighters, the managers, you did nothing. They didn't... They're laughing themselves to the bank. They're laughing themselves to the bank. I would too. What, they didn't get a pay raise for the last couple of years? Oh, my heart is breaking. But they got overtime, the firefighters, for sure. So who's winning in this game? Not the taxpayers, but the union. And you're supposed to represent us because we voted for you, not the union, but excuse me, they went door-to-door campaigning on your behalf. They send out those mailers, remember, that said, please vote for Mr. Najarian, Mr. Quintero, Mrs. Friedman. I remember those flyers because they believe in safety. And there was the people, and the people unfortunately believe that. And I hope this time around in April 2011, let me remember which council member of the incumbents received union money. Because please, people out there in the public, do not vote for anybody who receives union contributions.
I have no other speakers on this. Any further comments? Mr. Starbuck.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, Mr. Mayor, if I can, I'll first apologize for taking the time, but I think there needs to be a response to both Mr. Milano's and Mr. Mohill's comments. To suggest that there hasn't been a contribution to solve Glendale's budget problem by the firefighters is so far off the mark. We have to recognize the firefighters and the managers had an existing contract in effect for two years that would have given them upwards of a 4% to 4.5% pay increase. Now, roughly based on our fire budget and the amount allocated for wages, that would have been in the neighborhood of $2.5 million. In two years, it would have been an incremental cost increase in our budget that would have gone on and on. They gave that up, pure and simple. That's a savings. The manager's component of that of $93,000 is small because there aren't very many managers, but they're giving up just as much as the rank-and-file. And I will tell you, in light of the incidents that we have seen happen in Bell and come to light, that is tremendously commendable, the kinds of things we should be thanking employees for and serving as a model for everybody else in California. Number two, I suspect if you look at the numbers on the increase in salaries and hold them up against the CPI, my guess is you will see quite a correlation between the two. Because frankly, Glendale has never attempted to pay above the average. We've attempted to be competitive for as long as I've been here and I suspect longer than I've been here. We've worked at that, we've committed to that, and we've, I think, on the most part, achieved that. And I think the agreements that you saw from the GFFA, the proposal you've seen here today by the managers, who are the leadership in the department, who have done a tremendous job of really setting the right tone and values for the department, are models for public agencies in California, not to be held up as somehow being anywhere near what we've seen transpire in Bell. They are models for public agencies and I'll put them up against any other city in the state of California. With that, I recommend your approval.
Thank you. I did receive a late card from Bob Sear.
Well, you're in luck because as well as being an expert on war and peace, I'm an expert on unions. I happen to be the chief steward for the L.A. Unified School District, the Carpentry Department. I've been in unions since I was 16 years old when I was a clerk in a market. 75 percent of all workers in this country, clearly 75 percent, would like to be in unions. Anybody that's not in a union or hasn't become a civil servant yet, in my opinion, is an idiot. Civil servants are some of the happiest, contented workers. The carpenters that I work with, the L.A. Unified School District, are very proud of the job they do. They do extremely high-quality work and for every carpenter that's hired, there's about 250 applicants. So don't let anybody ever come up here without arguing to them about the quality of civil servants. The city workers in Glendale are proud of their jobs. They often have them for 30 or 40 years. They're outstanding workers, no doubt about it. The most prosperous times in this country were the periods when there was 35 percent or more union membership. That is a fact. When you have that much union membership, the union is able to influence politicians to vote for the workers. We have currently 11 percent union membership overall. Clearly, every worker that knows about the benefits of being in a union wants to be in a union. So you don't have to listen to this crap that these non-union people try to spew. And I'm sorry to get excited about it, but I know that there are millions of people that would love to have a civil service job right now. Our lives are more stable, although I only make $27 an hour. Outside-union workers make $37 an hour. Union wages are negotiated by the city or the contractor. It's a very democratic process. Unions are the most democratic entities in the country. They have done more to improve this country than any other organizations. So when I hear these people talking out of their ass, excuse my language.
Sir, keep it.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Out of their rectum, whatever's appropriate. It's really nauseating because union people are hard workers, construction workers risk their lives to provide, you know, buildings, freeways, and, you know, you just don't need to tolerate these idiots. So thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And I don't have any other cards. Is there any further discussion or a motion?
Glad to make the motion of moving 8A1 with a great big thank you to the fire department and to the management portion of the fire department. One last thing, if I'm correct, Matt Doyle's, today's your birthday. Happy birthday. Artie and I had ours yesterday. Today's yours. After we vote, would you please get out of here and go see your family for a good dinner? Thank you. I need the motion.
Okay, the resolution or the get out of here and go see your family? Both.
Always ready to get, always prepared to have Matt Doyle leave, but no, the resolution.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Raymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Good night, Matt.
8B, please. Mr. Mayor and council, at 8B is city manager regarding policy for the city government access challenge, GTV-6. At B1 is a resolution amending the GTV-6 government access policy.
Mr. Wells.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. On June 15th, you directed staff to bring back some options which will allow city council members to participate on GTV-6 programs. Staff has brought three options for your review this evening. Each option lists a number of programs and public service announcements that city council members can't participate in on an annual basis. Option one, for example, recommends that council members host one program and up to two public service announcements per year. And options two and three are variations of option number one. And of course, this is not a requirement. Of course, it would be up to each individual council member as to whether or not they want to participate in any of the programs. Should be noted that council members would still not be able to host a program. This only calls for participation in programs. In addition, council members would not be able to participate in programs or have programs on the air after they have filed papers to run for reelection. City council may wish to discuss whether or not public service announcements would be allowed during this period of time. And staff is seeking your direction tonight and any recommendations you may have.
Thank you. Before we get into the discussion, could you give us an idea, just so it's clear in my mind, what sort of programs are we talking about? The options are, as you said, variations between participation in programs and PSAs. PSAs, I think, we're familiar with, save water, you know, don't throw your litter, watch for brush fires, crime watch, all those sort of different things. But what sort of programs are currently out there that could possibly be available for council to?
We have several programs. We produce to Channel 6, for example, documentaries. We've done several documentaries in the past called Historical Glendale. We also produce a number of programs, Neighborhood Services Television, we have that one. There's also some different programs that we've hosted before about community events, things of that nature. Council members could participate in those as well.
I do have some speakers on this. Why don't we hear from the public and then we'll discuss it ourselves? Actually, I have one card, Mike Mohill.
Evening again, Mike Mohill, long-term resident. Well, you know, why did the city in the first place change the rules and now they want to bring it back? Mr. Weaver remembers why, because it wasn't done properly, et cetera. I think if you were going ahead and have this participation, you know, if you have a program and you're on it and you're on TV for a half an hour, 30 minutes, whatever, that's me as a taxpayer paying for your time on TV. What's it, $100 an hour? I have no idea. $1,000. TV's not cheap. Advertising's not cheap either. So if you're going to do that, why don't you consider that part of your campaign money? Put it in your 460 that you received money from the City of Glendale for that amount of money? Because anybody who's running for office won't have that advantage. Oh, maybe I should run for office and I'm going to be on TV too and let the city taxpayers of Glendale pay for my time at $100 an hour. There was a reason why the previous council decided not to have this go on again, all because of Mr. Weaver and his dogs. He was in the doghouse for a long time, right, Mr. Weaver?
That's your opinion.
Well, some people, that's what the Glendale news press said too, at the time. Anyway, having said that, you know, go ahead, make it part of, as your campaign money that you receive from the taxpayers, $100 an hour, whatever it is. I mean, you have the votes, I don't. Thank you. They also have the last word.
Okay, I don't have any other cards from the public.
I was just going to say, couldn't be asked to explain the financing?
Mr. Raymond.
Well, I have a question for the speaker.
Oh, okay. Mr. Mohill, come on back. You certainly are if you're called up and questioned by a council member.
Only I'm not called back, so I guess I'm being honored. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mohill.
Yes.
You're speaking to the council and advising us of your opinion.
Yes.
On this particular item, so I assume you know something about this particular item. Of the three options that are presented, option one, option two, and three, which of those three do you think is the most reasonable?
None.
None. Can you tell me, in option one, well, which of those options do you think allows council members to have a program, as you put it?
None.
Then why did you put it that way during your comments?
Mr. Raymond, don't bait me, please.
I'm not baiting you.
I'm not a lawyer.
I'm asking you a question. You come up here.
I'm just making the comment.
Answer the question if you want. If you don't, don't. It's as simple as that. But you come here making advice about this and you make some statements that are just flat-out not a part of this presentation.
I just look at it.
Hold on, Mr. Mohill. One at a time, Mr. Mohill, one at a time.
That's fair enough.
You'll get a chance. If there's a question, ask it ultimately to respect.
I just want to know if the speaker can tell me, direct me in this particular staff report, where there is anything about council members having a program. You said that three times during your comments.
Well, I say council members will be able to participate up to two programs, up to two PSAs. And then option three, two programs. I hear the word program, program, three different times. Okay? All right, thank you.
Let me point out, Mr. Mayor, and I'll help the speaker.
Excuse me, sir.
Yes. Well, if possible, yes. Let me help the speaker out here. Every one of the options starts with the following: City council members will not host programs produced by GTV staff. Every option.
Disobeying.
Well, if that's the case, why are we discussing it then?
No, that wasn't a question, Mr. Mohill. Mr. Weaver.
Could I have Mr. Wells explain the funding? You say the taxpayers of Glendale are paying for these programs.
These would be existing programs that Channel 6 is already producing.
And the source of the funding?
Public education and government access fees, which appear on cable bills, so only cable subscribers pay for the public education and government access fee.
Not the taxpayers of Glendale, per se.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else wishing to comment? Mr. Quintero.
Well, I continue to be opposed to this, whether an elected official hosts a program or participates in a program, and PSAs, which are public service announcements. It's still basically elected officials putting themselves on an access channel and I just don't think it's appropriate. We are already seeing by the residents of Glendale who have cable and on the internet, at city council meetings, at Glendale redevelopment meetings and housing meetings. Then whenever there's a ribbon-cutting for a housing, what do you call it? Housing programs, whatever. We're already on Channel 6 on a regular basis and I don't think we have to increase our visibility on Channel 6. It's, I just don't, I don't think this is appropriate. We changed it in 2001 and although Mr. Weaver seems to be getting the bulk of the criticism, in fact, all of the other elected officials at the time had their own programs in one way or the other. They all seem to be appearing on Channel 6. We changed it in 2001, so that wouldn't be the case and I don't think we need to head back in that direction. Whether you host a program or not, I don't think we need to be appearing on programs. As I mentioned last time, we have department heads and section heads and lots of professionals that can handle the information and have the public, you know, get to know their employees. I think that's a better bet.
Mr. Weaver.
Personally, I disagree with Mr. Quintero, obviously. Yes, I hosted a show because I was told I could, just like everybody else at the time. I enjoyed it. New council changed that. Okay, I've lived with it all this time. Personally, I don't see if any council member participates for a brief period in a show, five minutes, 10 minutes or whatever. I don't see a problem. We all have a distinct advantage as it is. If we're running for reelection, we've been here every Tuesday. Everybody can see, and then it's rerun. So what if we participate in a program, like you said, the history, histories of Glendale? Mr. Raymond's born here. I've lived here longer than most people, 71 years. I know a little history of Glendale and if I was asked for three, four, or five minutes to give some impressions of the history of Glendale, I'd like to do it. I don't think that's trying to monopolize television, get extra credit with the public. I just don't think it's a big deal as long as we're not doing a program or dominating in a program. A few minutes of interviews, I don't see any problem. How would that work like on cruise night? You come up to one of us... You come up to one of us walking on the street, and you ask our opinions. What do we think? Does that fall into this category? Would we have to say, "No, don't interview me, I can't do that"? Would that, Mr. Wells?
You would be included in that program, so we would have you as one of the participants. So, yes, you would.
So I'd have to say, "Don't interview me."
Right.
Which is kind of ridiculous. When we're out at a city event, we should be able to be interviewed if that is the choice of the cruise or whatever. So I don't have a problem, and I don't care which option. Option one's fine with me, two, I don't care. But I don't think it's a big deal to restrict us. Like, the mayor of LA, he's on television every doggone day, morning, noon, and night. No, that's a difference. Why should we be so far in the background, so different than other cities? I don't know how other cities work, but imagine they get out there quite a bit.
Mr. Weaver raises, I guess, a question for clarification. If, and I haven't watched GTV 6 in a while, but if we've got a roving videographer during cruise night, and someone asks, someone asks me, "What car did you give your trophy to?" And I say, "Well, it was a 1947 Cadillac, fastback, black, great shape." Does that constitute appearing in a program?
Well, you're carrying on your duties as mayor of Glendale, so you are presenting the mayor's trophy as part of the cruise night activities. So that, that's just your normal duties as mayor. We would include you in the overall presentations of the trophies.
Okay, bad example. Let's say it was Mr. Weaver, then. Mr. Weaver, what car do you like out of all these? And he says, "Well, I like whatever, you know, '57 Chevy," or whatever. Would that, you know, a possible 15, 20-second expression of vehicular interest? Would that count as, would that fill one of the program?
Well, I think the options you have listed before you are really intended to cover the existing programs that are produced by Channel 6. Historical program is one that comes to mind, so we have perhaps a lot of studio works involved. There is a produced half-hour program, which is sometimes scripted and something of that nature.
And do we, how many programs, actual numbers do we have? If we voted for one of these and it's two programs, are there 10 programs that have room, that are relevant for council participation?
Yeah, I think we would have that many, sure.
Just to follow up on the cruise night example, under the current ordinance, the roving reporter, would they, or would they not be prohibited, or would they be instructed not to, let's say, interview a random council member they saw? Is that something that you don't do now because of the ordinance?
We prefer not to do that. You're correct.
So just to be clear, so right now, because of the ordinance?
Correct.
If you see cruise night on TV, you're not going to see a council member?
Except for the mayor making the trophy presentation.
Except for the mayor.
And, of course, the council does get up on stage and welcomes everybody to cruise night. That's part of the introduction, the festivities.
On that particular event.
Correct.
But let's say it was an event where council didn't do that. I don't, Unity Fest, or whatever, so you, you're sort of, if your camera's out there panning the crowd and they happen to hit a council member, do you edit that? I'm just trying to see how this has been playing out, playing out in this ordinance.
The answer's no.
I'm asking, I'm asking.
It's been played out, in essence, again, if there are, your council members participating and doing their duties as an elected official at a groundbreaking, at a dedication, things of that nature, we do cover that. That is, that is part of your duties as a member of the city council.
Do you cover the speech? Do you interview them afterwards, for instance?
No, we usually just cover the speech. Correct.
Mr. Quintero.
Yeah, and that's, you know, one of the points. So we're already, I forgot, actually, in addition to city council redevelopment, we're already at cruise night, the opening ceremonies, the genocide commemoration event, the mayor is, usually gives a speech, Unity Fest, Caesar Chavez, so, I mean, we already have lots of camera time. I just don't think we need more, more camera time.
Actually, that's just simply not so. If, for example, Mr. Quintero, you're the chair, let's say, of the Caesar Chavez event, and you're speaking, you might be appearing. But if council member Friedman is there and just in the audience, and someone wanted to come up and say, "What did you think of this event?", that would not appear. And that's, that's what we're doing right now.
No, but in fact...
So to say that council member Friedman is already, has FaceTime there is just not so.
No, but at those events, all council members are usually on the stage. That's true of Unity Fest, Caesar Chavez, the genocide memorial, no. A commemoration event, no. But all of the other events, council members that show up, go up on the stage, so it's not...
I've been to that event several times and have never spoken at that event and have never been there. Mr. Mayor, can I?
Let me ask you a question, Mr. Drayman. What are these three options appeals to you?
Well, I just want to say that the, where I disagree, I think, with Mr. Quintero, I understand completely his concern. And I was teasing the speaker earlier, but I take Mr. Quintero's comments very seriously. His concerns are serious concerns. But where I disagree is that I think it's in the intent, when you say, "I don't think we need to increase our visibility," no, I don't either. That's not the point. That's not the point of these options. It's not so that the council can increase their visibility. There are certain roles that elected officials are supposed to fulfill on behalf of the public. And to me, I think it is important not for us just to sit up here and say, "I support, you know, a 10% conservation of water and vote on that." I think it's also important for us to participate in PSAs, public service announcements, where we help to encourage the public to adopt a wiser behavior in terms of conservation. And water conservation is just one issue. There are many, many issues. Public safety, issues of pedestrian safety, and so on. These are things that, that in every, virtually every other city, it's just expected. It is just expected. And Councilmember Friedman was talking about last time we were discussing this, about her travels. Whenever I travel, I just happen to like watching public access television when I'm in other cities, just to see what they're doing and what they're talking about and what the similarities are between that particular city and Glendale. I don't see these cities going to hell in a handbasket because an elected official, whoever that is, but let's say a council member, is saying, you know, "Look both ways before you cross the street. It may save your life," you know? Or if they're doing a piece on Leslie Brand, and they ask a council member about their recollections, in Mr. Weaver's case, of growing up in Glendale and what Brand Boulevard looked like in, you know, 1941, to say that, that these are factors of, "We need to increase our visibility." No, that's not the reason. I view it as part of our responsibility. Frankly, Mr. Mayor, I, as one council member, I can't imagine seeking out anyone at GTV 6, or Mr. Wells, and saying, "I'd like to be on a program." I'm just not, that's just not how I'm motivated on this. On the other hand, if there was a PSA and I could lend my face and my voice to that in a way that would bring greater, greater understanding of issues in our city, sure, I would be glad to participate in that. Frankly, I'd be just as happy if these were limited to PSAs. I don't have a problem with that. But if there's a concern about it, and whether or not this will be the slippery slope that will take the city of Glendale gasping down the tubes, then let's do what we've done in the past. Let's take a more conservative approach, see how it goes, and go from there. Or take, say, option two, which is two and two, and if there is something that needs to be beyond that, this council can approve it or not approve it. If Mr. Quintero decides he wants to do, he's already done two PSAs, and they want him to say a few words about turning up at the Caesar Chavez event, and he wants to do that, we can vote to let him do that. I'm just, to me, I just don't, I don't see the horrifying concern with all the things that are facing cities right now and municipalities. Anything that increases communication between our elected officials, important policy issues, or informational issues, or historical issues, and the public that puts these elected officials there, is worth doing.
Mr. Weaver.
Yeah, philosophically, I'm with Mr. Drayman on it. Television GTV 6 started in 1996.
1995.
1995. Shortly after that, that each elected council member had a program promoting the city.
Correct.
With no thought of trying to promote themselves. It was educating the public on fire, the police, downtown, whatever. I remember those. You know, I don't, you could bring the five of them in here that were there in 96. I doubt if any one was saying, "Well, I was looking for publicity for myself, for reelection." I just don't believe that. So if you want number two, I'll go with number two if the public wants. No, 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 I'm just saying, maybe two.
I have a, I have a card from Mr. Sir, and I hate to interrupt this dynamic discussion that we're having to hear from the public. So I think, Mr. Howard, what I'd like to do at some point would be to state a rule that once council begins to deliberate, that we not take any further cards. And you can explain to me how best to do that, perhaps next meeting, if it has to be a formal, formal action or just a stated policy of the chair of the meeting, that's, that's fine. But Mr. Sir was not aware of that, so, Mr. Sir.
Believe it or not, at work, I'm famous for being patient, subdued, and reflective. However, when people lie about the working class, I get excited and I defend them. My fellow citizens are entitled to their own opinions. However, they are not entitled to their own version of the facts. Everyone is certainly entitled to be wrong from time to time, but as we all know, many people abuse that privilege. I'm going to be brief, no matter how long it takes. I was born 60 years and one day ago at the Glendale Sanitarium, which obviously explains a lot. It's now called...
That's what I say.
Yeah.
Sanitarium, yeah.
All right. The best people came out of there. Maybe not the most stable, but the best.
Thank you.
It's now called Glendale Adventist. When I was growing up, I thought Glendale was the boringest city on earth. I spent my time on Van Nuys Boulevard, Pasadena, Hermosa Beach, anywhere else but Glendale. However, after going bankrupt in Los Osos, California, a little bit south of Morro Bay, I decided to come back to Southern California and ended up in Glendale. I live near Trader Joe's up in La Cressena, very quiet community, very boring community, quiet, nice, well-kept up. So I appreciate what the city council has done to provide, to provide a nice city for most people. A lot of my friends that I work with, wish they lived in Glendale, they liked the Glendale school system, the police, the fire department, a lot of things about it. The former, the previous speaker is pound-wise and penny-foolish. I'm going to share some facts with him and you. The war in Iraq, the first five years, will have cost the American taxpayer, each taxpayer $10,000.
Mr. Sir, I hate to interrupt you, but...
No, this pertains to what I'm getting at.
Okay, please get, show us some nexus between those two.
So what I'm saying is, people are concerned about a little bit of money that's going to pay for TV or the civil servants. If voters were allowed to vote on how their taxes were to be spent, much more would go to city government and things that actually they can see. It's really upsetting when people criticize, and I, and the way that people talk to the city council has indicated to me that that's not an effective way to communicate. If you want to get things off your chest, it's not appropriate to dump on civil servants. But anyway, I think you guys are doing a fine job, and I think the money that you're spending is well-spent, much better than the military. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I would like to have some sort of consensus on the council with regard to this item. Would my colleagues consider starting with two PSAs each, refraining from any programs except on a case-by-case basis, at which time it would come before the council or decision, or perhaps opening it up towards, Mr. ...
Booker.
Booker, please. We can hear your, the acoustics are such, we can hear everything you're saying.
Hey, everybody.
To at least, to at least try the PSA route primarily and see if it sits well with both the public and us, and then to perhaps make adjustments to the policy at a later date. Mr. Drayman.
I would support two PSAs, and if there, if there is programming that, that comes up, we can bring those items before council, and council can give a thumbs up or a thumbs down, and the public can weigh in.
I don't care about it.
Mr. Weaver.
I'm just, I think we're making a huge mountain out of a Mohill. I just think the people sitting at home, is this all we have to do, and council sit here and decide how many seconds we're going to be on local television channel only? Well, if that's what you guys want, ladies, I'll go the two PSA, and then every time you have a program and you want one of us on, we'll put it on the council agenda, and then we'll debate for half an hour whether that council person gets to do a spot on a show. That's what we're going to do, fine. Again, I think it's a mountain out of a Mohill.
Not eliminating the possibility of us adopting a broader policy after, after we get a few under our belt.
Yeah, yeah, see what the public writes in.
Yeah. I haven't said any, I'm good. I haven't said anything yet, so I thought I'd make a few comments, which is that, in general, well, first, I think this is a very healthy debate, and it's a good debate. And the fact that the council takes this so seriously, I think, really shows that we are concerned about doing what's right, and also the perception that the public might have about any actions that we take. And I think that's, that's a good thing. I tend to agree with Mr. Drayman, and actually, Mr. Quintero, you know, said something that struck me, which was, boy, we're already on TV so much, we sit on Housing Authority, we're on council, we're on redevelopment, it gets rebroadcast once or twice a week. And I agree, we are on a lot, and so it's very hard for me to see how adding a PSA or an interview on something, or being interviewed for five minutes during cruise night or Unity Fest is going to somehow tip some scale to where, you know, we're just going to saturate the airwaves with our presence. I think the people who watch one show on GTV 6 probably watch a lot of them, and there probably aren't a whole lot of them who watch anything at all. But to me, it's not at all about publicity. Like he said, we get publicity. Anybody who follows politics at all already knows our faces. If we're on another five minutes a week, or a minute a week, it's, they're not going to all of a sudden realize that I'm a council member if they've been watching GTV 6 at all. So, you know, I just don't believe that. But to me, it's a little bit like when I go to a lot of community events. I enjoy going to community events, but I don't go to them just because I enjoy them. And I don't go to them to get publicity out there. I go to them because the groups that are having those events ask me to go because they find it important. To them, it means that the city is endorsing their group or supporting their group, and takes an interest in what they're doing. And to me, it's sort of the same. I think that if something is important, like Mr. Drayman said, the public does expect us to be somehow a part of it at times, whether it's advocating for people to save water or being seen at an event like Unity Fest. And I think it's just silly that if they're panning across the crowd at one of the events, they have to edit out council members, or if they're interviewing men on the street or women on the streets, they can't talk to us. I just find that odd. So do I want to host a show? No, I don't have the time to host a show, and I don't think I'd be very good at it anyway. But I think this prohibition kind of, I don't think it's serving us well. I also remember this, and, you know, not to draw on a comparison that's, you know, totally off-base, but I was just thinking, when I was back, I would happen to be in New York City a couple weeks after 9/11, and this is, you know, a completely separate thing, obviously. But when I was there, you know, the mayor of New York was all over the airwaves, not just in the news, but he was on their public access channels. And it was really comforting to the people of that city to see their mayor communicating with them. It would have been very different if they had sent a staffer or a deputy. And I'm not saying that if we, you know, had an emergency, God forbid, that wouldn't happen, but we have things that are, you know, obviously much below the level of 9/11, but that are nonetheless important, like the station fire. And I think there are times when to have the mayor or a council member be on the air, maybe even a lot during that night, to communicate to the public... maybe even a lot during that night, to communicate to the public, or even just to stand there next to the fire chief, would be comforting to the public. I know it was for me when I was in New York then, and it was for the people who were there. So, I think that there are times where it's not about publicity, and it's not even about a PSA, but just about, like Mr. Drayman said, about communication and about being there for the public. So, options, any of them is fine with me. You know, I'm, not a huge issue to me, but I think we need to think of this, not in the context of publicity. It's not at all about publicity to me. Like you said, we're on TV a lot, on GTV six, but if there are things that need to be communicated, I don't want our staffers and GTV six to be afraid to put us on the air, to, you know, to be there for people. That's my-
Thank you. Mr. Quintero.
Actually, I have a question. The PSA, for instance, let's say, who's going to pick the council member that's going to actually do the PSA? I'm into veterans issue. I'm a Vietnam vet, I'm always, do I get to do that? How about Mr. Weaver? He also served in the military. These other council members are certainly not against veterans issues, quote, so who gets to do a PSA on veterans issues, or any other issue for that matter? Which council member is going to get chosen? Does anybody have any?
I'll defer you.
As for that?
Fight it out.
Yeah, that's what's going to happen. Fight it out, or gee, I, you know, should do this, and you should do the other, whatever. I, I just don't.
Do you have an answer to that?
Well, under the recommendation, the public information officer or whoever the city manager designates would notify the council members on a monthly basis of the programs that are being produced, of the public service announcements that are going to be produced. And then that way, the council members could let the public information officer know which programs or which public service announcements they would like to participate in. It could be two council members on one PSA. It could be two council members in one program, so it, it-
Could it be three? Could it be three?
It could be three.
I notice in the report, if there's three, that doesn't count.
Then it doesn't count.
As one of your two.
That's right.
Oh, man.
Also doesn't buy like a brown hat. Mr. Weaver, then Mr. Drayman.
I just want to say, I don't care if I get on any, if it's a PSA of something I feel strong about, and maybe then I'd want to, but I'm not looking for it today or tomorrow. And I strongly believe, and Mr. Quintero and I strongly differ on, on this. When I started my dog show, I never knew it would be popular, and it became the most popular show on Channel Six. I could go into restaurants, children would come up to me, and parents, and thank me. To this day, I still get people coming up and saying, "Oh, when I was a child, we adopted a sh, a dog off your show," and stuff. I never expected that. I wasn't looking at publicity. I was trying to help the animals, and I got over a thousand adopted in my four years, which I'll never regret. But it became popular. We're not talking about getting popularity out of this. We're talking about PSAs and stuff for the community on different events, or a spot on something on a history, or something else that we're intimately involved in, that we care about for the community. It's not about publicity.
And I do have to add that the first season box set DVDs are available.
They are?
On GTV six. Mr. Drayman.
Oh, my, I can't believe that we are still sitting here talking about this particular issue, and we still have, you know, things on the agenda like quality of life indicators and, and other things that I think are incredibly important, and we're, we're going around and around this. I'm going to make a motion and, and see where it goes, Mr. Mayor, if that's okay with you.
That's fine.
And either it'll have support or it won't. So I'm going to, I'm going to move, let's see, where are we?
Go ahead.
Uh, GTV six. I'm going to move eight A, excuse me, eight B, option one. And I'm going to add to that the idea that we can revisit it at the end of one year, and either-
We will.
Make it go away, or say the world hasn't, the world as we know it. What's, what's the phrase you use, Mr. Quintero? The sun will, the sun will still rise.
Rise tomorrow.
Yes, will rise tomorrow.
I'll second that.
So the option one, as amended.
With it coming back in a year.
One, one language to revisit in a year. Is that the calendar year, or, or twelve months from now? And there's that blackout of, once, once candidacy is declared?
Yes, however, you do have the option of looking at public service announcements as a separate part of that. If you wanted to go ahead and do public service announcements, that's your option.
Okay.
During that period of time. Well.
Let's, council's going to then, going to then have to make that clear in this proposal, because this proposal deals with the section under the current policy involving council participation. It does not address the incumbent election policy, which precludes participation or hosting a, participation or hosting a program, or other than regular or scheduled council meetings or other events that the council members are attending.
What is that time period? What is that time period?
January till April.
What is the blackout period?
The blackout period is when you file papers. You take out papers. When his papers have been filed.
There'll always be another council member to step in.
Irrespective of Mr. Wells's suggestion, I would still, my motion is option one, with a, with a sunset clause, possibility of a sunset clause, after a year.
Was there a second?
Yeah, I seconded it.
Is there any further discussion? Let's take roll. Councilmember Drayman?
Yes.
Freedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Oh.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Well, we've worked our way through that one.
And I would like, I think, I think speaking, speaking for the council, not to put words in anyone's mouth, I think we'd like to see an equitable distribution of PSAs in terms of, whatever is done, I, I think we'd all like equity in terms of length of, length of appearance and number of reruns and all those sort of things. I think that might head off some complaints at the end of the year.
In a year, yeah.
Okay. Okay, let's move on to the next item.
At eight C is Director of Public Works regarding public sale of surplus city-owned property at one three three eight North Jackson Street. At C one is a resolution of intent for the auction sale of the surplus property and notice thereof.
I just have a question. I see that the, of course, this property was damaged by a mudslide.
Two thousand five.
Extensively damaged.
Yes, sir.
Is the initial asking bid at two hundred thousand too low? I mean, do you feel that we should set that higher, so we?
This Sam, Sony can provide some information. My understanding is that we've had it reviewed and determined that that would be a good floor, given the, the condition of the property. More than likely, it's land value.
And let's clarify, we have the ability to reject all bids.
That's correct.
At any time. If at the end, we think that there's, you know, something wrong, or we didn't get enough, we can still reject all the bids.
Yes.
Decide to hold the property.
All right. Under the code, it can be rejected.
That gives a level of security. Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Are there any cards?
There, there was, cards?
Eight, this is eight C. I don't have any cards on this. Roll call, please. Councilmembers, Drayman?
Yes.
Freedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
We handled that.
Next item.
The eight D is Director of Community Plan regarding two thousand and nine quality of life indicators. At D one is a motion to receive and file a report.
Thank you. Mr. Starbird.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, for the long-awaited staff report, I will go to Mr. Engel.
Thank you, Mr. Starbird. Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the city council. City council directed staff to review and update the first edition of the Quality of Life Indicators report, which was originally developed and presented in two thousand and two. Glendale residents, along with city staff, worked to update and revise the original report, which is being presented to you tonight. Staff has prepared a brief presentation with a recommendation to receive and file the two thousand and nine indicators report. These indicators are guides. They represent complicated data within a community's system. Review of a community's indicators allow the, allow the community itself to effectively manage the systems that are in their care. They're not intended to be an in-depth analysis of particular topics, but they are very much a surface view of the issues within the community that have been identified by the community members themselves. Glendale first became involved in measuring quality of life through our designation of it as a California healthy city, in an effort to address community problems through a community-driven feedback process. The Community Steering Committee was initially formed to undertake this important task. The first edition of the indicators established broad topics and individual indicators by which Glendale's overall quality of life could be quantified and ultimately measured. It was intended that this report be updated periodically, although in two thousand and two, no formal plan was adopted to maintain or update the document. The first report contained eleven topics with fifty-four subtopics, and was available primarily in hard copy and secondarily in PDF format on the city's website. Was in the tradition of the citizen involvement that produced the first report, that a new steering committee was formed again in two thousand and nine at your direction to reevaluate the information being measured and to request that the additional data be added to the report. A complete list of the members and their organizations who participated in the update can be accessed online on the project website. To give the rest of the report tonight, I'd like to introduce Administrative Analyst Susanna Dellis, who developed the final indicators report to complete the balance of this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the city council. Neighborhood Services staff undertook the important responsibility of creating and updating the report and website. Following a series of community meetings, data collection, and analysis, the updated report now contains twelve indicator topics with eighty-three subtopics. The two thousand and nine report has been published online in an electronic format at www.glendalen indicators dot com. All of the premier cities that were researched were found to present their indicators exclusively online, which has become standard practice. Indicator's website was modeled after the Community Indicators Initiative of Spokane, Washington site, whose staff was especially helpful to us in our site development. The two thousand and nine report is also available in a printout by request only. When the report was made available online last October, all of the data and links were current. We know, however, that many of the agencies may update their data periodically, which may affect the website links. Your handout tonight is a complete printout of all the screens on the website. The twelve categories in the two thousand and nine Quality of Life indicators cover many elements of community health. The full list of indicators and subtopics may be found on the website by following the indicators-at-a-glance link, which is also provided as exhibit one of the staff report. Although some of the data was collected by Glendale City Departments, it is important to understand that staff also collected existing data from other reliable sources, such as the U.S. Census Bureau and the L.A. County Department of Health, to name a few. The public meetings provided members of the community an opportunity to request that additional information be added to the report. In several cases, committee members and staff determined that while the requested information would be valuable and would strengthen the indicators report, it was currently not being collected, not researched, or the data was not available via existing sources. In order to improve the quality of future indicator assessments, committee recommendations were noted and are provided in exhibit three for the council's review and consideration. The indicators are intentionally a surface view of those issues that contribute to quality of life. They're meant to be a starting point for intelligence gathering. In areas that may show a concern, the city and community leaders would have a platform from which to begin to conduct more research in an effort to better understand a particular issue. Eventually, indicators could develop into a sustainability report card, similar to that of Santa Monica. They may also be used in planning purposes to shed light on previously unknown issues and to help the community address those issues as needed. As we said, the indicators are currently a surface view. In-depth analysis and cross-checking the numbers between several sources could provide an even clearer picture of a particular issue, as opposed to a one-sided approach, which only uses one data source. There are members of the community and the work group that have been requesting such analysis of some of the key community indicators, such as crime and graduation rates, to name a few. Additional analysis of this type, however, would require additional resources. Currently, there is minimal impact to the general fund. To maintain the website accessible to the public with no resource dedicated to regular research, updating, and site maintenance, Neighborhood Services allocates twenty dollars for website domain registration and hosting annually. Should the council direct staff to provide timely updates, implement supplemental data collection, or begin community surveying, additional resources would be needed. The council was wise in pressing for an update of the two thousand and two report. The first report was used extensively as a helpful resource for city staff and the community to review the efficacy of services and identify community needs. The committee is optimistic that the updated report will again be used as a tool to better serve the residents and businesses of Glendale. The indicators committee and staff are pleased to present the two thousand and nine Quality of Life indicators report to the city council. We are prepared to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a few questions. Where, what, and I looked at this on, online as well, but does this, does this hard copy indicate who the community participants were?
Yes, it-
What page would that be on, or?
Mayor Najarian, members of the city council, the, the website, on the bottom of the website, there are links, home, links, media, contact us, our approach, indicators at a glance, and help. I believe that these, the information that you're requesting for, Mayor Najarian, is in our approach, so if you were to click on that link-
Okay, but is it in this, is it in this hard copy?
It is not in the hard copy. Only the main web pages are in the hard copy.
Was it correct that I saw that Herbert Milano was part of the community participation group?
Yes, that's correct.
What made him part of our community? What was the criteria that we accepted him into the study group for?
Perhaps, Mr. Engel?
Mr. Engel, explain that to me. He's not a resident, obviously.
Mr. Najarian, members of the city council, Mr. Milano is a property owner in town. With that broad definition of community, with property owners, business owners, various stakeholders, including residents themselves, he would be eligible to participate on this. There were a number of people that aren't residents that participated in this, would be executive directors of nonprofit corporations, that kind of thing.
Wasn't, wasn't the city fresh off that lawsuit that he filed against us, the redevelopment agency that ended up costing us close to seven hundred thousand dollars? And I think it was. So why on earth would we bring someone into our work group who consistently, for many years now, has been bringing lies to the public, making personal ugly attacks against the council? Why would we want that sort of person in the group? And let me answer that question. I would not want someone like that in the group. I wouldn't want him on any other commission or ad hoc committee, simply for the fact that he has cost the city too much. And he comes in week after week and denigrates the city and spreads his falsehoods, despite being corrected. He has refused to accept correction, despite being pointed out where his personal attacks against council members are wrong, council members and their family are wrong. He's refused to apologize. I'm appalled that he is part of this group, and I would like, Mr. Starbird, to be notified, if he's a member of any other ad hoc committee, that we scrutinize his participation much more closely. I, I just, I don't, I don't know what the city was thinking at this point. I mean, his comments, I think, reached a level of malice towards several of the council people. Why are we listening to someone from Tahunga tell us what our quality of life should be in Glendale? I have a problem with that. I really do. So, that's the way I feel about it. I don't know if my colleagues, they don't have to say anything, they don't have to agree or disagree, but speaking for myself, I don't want that ever to happen again. Are there any other questions for Ms. Dellis?
It's a nice report.
Mr. Drayman?
On page three of the hard copy that Mr. Engel handed, this was newspaper articles, how do these newspaper articles figure into production of this document? Or in what way do they?
Councilmember Drayman, members of the city council, again, this website was modeled after the Spokane, Washington website, and in their website, they, they, in an effort to show transparency in government, they provided all of the links of any relative reporting on their website, they attached it to theirs. And so, as part of what the committee recommended, they, they sort of indicated that they liked the idea that, that we would have that access to all of the available- idea that we would have that access to all of the available data that had already been printed publicly.
So just to make sure I'm understanding you, the purpose of the information on Page 3 of this hard copy, these newspaper articles, these were links to these, what I guess the group felt were representative or important local publishing entities or journalistic entities? I'm a little bit perplexed, I'm sorry.
Mr. Drayman, members of the City Council, there's two issues here. In answer to your question, what we have down here is anytime the indicators project was mentioned in the news, it shows up here as a link. This is a policy that we follow with the Neighborhood Services website as well. Anytime there are a program or an article or anything that is mentioned in the news that is relevant to what's on our overall website under Neighborhood Services, we provide the link to that. This one does that as well.
Well, so I'm looking at these. I don't see, for example, gosh, I don't even know where to start. I don't see any of the papers from the, what Mr. Weissman would call, far north Glendale. I don't see any of the Spanish-language publications or Armenian-language publications in Armenian or English versions. I do see Vanguard. Vanguard is wedged neatly in there between the L.A. Times and the Glendale News Press. Are they a relevant news publication?
They reported on the indicators?
No, they wrote about it. I don't know, you use the word "news," Mr. Engel, so I'm taking you at your comment, is what I'm saying. You use the word "news." Do we just mean that they wrote something about it?
Yes.
Because I suspect that a lot of publications in and around Glendale are writing things about quality of life in Glendale. In fact, one of the folks writing on Vanguard about quality of life in Glendale was the person you were just referring to, Najarian. Sort of a little double dip there. Anyway, I was just curious about that.
So that news section then includes blogs, all blogs?
Councilmember Friedman, members of the City Council, no. These links only linked articles or publications that had something to say about this particular report, not any other quality of life issues or general quality of life issues, but rather only this report.
So, but if, let's say, a blog had written about the quality of life indicators, that would be in here? Or the percent of value?
That would have to be something that would be determined.
Just seems if it says "newspaper," it means I can go to a stand and purchase a copy. You don't do that with Vanguard.
Can I ask another question?
Sure, go ahead.
I have a question. It's sort of throughout the report, but I'm just going to take one example, which is Page 45 about alcohol availability. And I'm wondering if the chart that's shown, which gives percentages, is corrected for density. In other words, looking at this, it says that 32% of the alcohol licenses in the city are in the south part of the city. But is that also corrected for the fact that most of the residents of the city are in the south part of the city? Because if not, it's really, it skews, it makes it seem as though the people in that area drink more. Now, they may or they may not, I can't tell, because this isn't corrected.
More dense population.
For the population.
Yeah, I can answer that. The California Department of Alcohol Beverage Control does not take into account density. It only takes into account geographic location.
So without being corrected for density, what is this graph supposed to be showing me?
Locations.
Right, but so what? I mean, I don't understand what the purpose, how does that relate to quality of life? I mean, for all I know, because I don't know what percentage of residents are in that area, this could be that, it could be that the south part has, per capita, a lower amount of alcohol licenses than, you know, let's say, Pellicone.
And that is...
So how does that figure into the quality of life, to throw out a statistic like that?
That is an excellent question. As I alluded to earlier, further analysis, when, this is a platform. This is a very periphery view of 83 topics. If there is an issue or something that arises or that appears to be of concern, that would absolutely then require further analysis, such as the analysis that you've indicated.
My worry is that people might take these statistics and draw conclusions that aren't warranted, because, for instance, this one about alcohol, just at a glance, you would say, my goodness, why do we have more alcohol licenses in the south part of the city than we do in the east part? But if I then said, if you didn't take into account that you have a lot more people in the south part of the city than you do in the east part, you could draw some negative conclusions about areas of town that might or might not be warranted. But, so that's my concern, that if we're going to have a statistic like this, that maybe we should at least have a qualification somewhere nearby that says not corrected for density or something like that.
Yeah, it does mention that it is the highest, the higher-density area.
Right, exactly.
Mike, the nature of the commercial?
Not just density, but it's also commercial areas, commercial zoning from brands, central, Colorado...
More restaurants, more bars.
Right, and that would require more cross-tabulation analysis.
Okay.
In the committee recommendations, under that it says alcohol availability per capita. It's one of the recommendations along what you're saying.
That was...
More work.
Councilmember Friedman, members of the City Council, that was one of the recommendations that came in. The other thing that comes up is that you raised the question that comes up with this. And what you would want to do in that, when you raise that question, is, is there really excessive availability in that neighborhood, as the statistic might indicate or not? And you would cross-tab that with the density, and it may turn out to be true, or it may not turn out to be true. But you're not going to know that unless you have this statistic in front of you.
Okay.
And that's the intent of having the surface view of this to lead to that next question.
Okay.
Because if, in fact, the only place people have in denser neighborhoods, and it's not so much an issue in Glendale, but in other communities, south-central, the only place where people have to go to get food is a liquor store, that is a huge issue of quality of life. That is not necessarily the case in Glendale. We don't purport that to be. But it is a standard measure of quality of life, city to city, is the availability of alcohol and the presence of alcohol in a neighborhood. You would then equate, you might want to look at, is there, are there incidents of alcoholism when you look at the county health report, if you were to want to do that? This is very much, as we said, a surface view and is intended to lead to the next question that you or the health community or the social service community might want to ask if they were looking.
Can I ask another question? Which is, what, can you explain to me the role of the committee? The committee that Mr. Milano was on and other members of the public? What was their role in this report?
Councilmember Friedman, members of the City Council, their role was to say, was to ask the question of what actually constitutes, if we were to say, what makes Glendale a great place to live or would make it a better place to live if we addressed these things? What are those things that would constitute that? And that was the role of the committee, is to identify those things that they felt would do that. And that's what the committee did. And then they sent to staff, this is what we would like to identify, and it was a whole litany of things, and that's in the staff report we sent you. And there was a whole litany of things. There were a number of things that we could get very easily, because those things are measured by L.A. County Health, they're measured by the Census Bureau, they're measured by a number of places, since we didn't do actually any measurements ourselves. There were some things the committee felt that would, that are a true measure of quality of life in the community that, in fact, nobody actually measures at all. And that's in the recommendations, said if we, in a perfect world, we wish you measured this. So that was their role, is to identify those. Ms. Dellis's role was to say, can we find a measurement that matches what the committee wants, yes or no? And then if so, can we get it in here under the particular elements that they want to measure? And that was, and that's what you see in here, where you actually have very attributable measurements, whether it's Census, county health, AQMB isn't in this one, it was in the previous report, but other places actually measure water quality, those things.
Mr. Starbird, you still?
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the questions you raise are why, frankly, my office has struggled a great deal to bring this to you. Because frankly, once done, as Mr. Engel has pointed out, this is a, he uses a surface view. I'd call it a very superficial view of data, which, if, if in the wrong hands, could give a very misleading impression about all of these indicators and application in Glendale. I think when we started down this road, and it was the Housing Authority meeting, when the council Housing Authority asked us to encourage the committee to redo the Quality of Life report, Sam noted, to do this right really takes more resources than we were going to be devoting it to. So we went into this knowing it was going to be a very superficial, rather unsophisticated approach to what could be a very valuable tool, if indeed, the amount of resources was applied to it. And we don't apply that kind of resources to it. So as a result, you get, you get a document that may be viewed by some as being considerably more than it is intended to be. And so when the work was done, we had at least three meetings trying to say, wait a minute, how can we fix this so that people don't draw the wrong conclusions from this? And frankly, it's very difficult to do, because we just didn't have the staff originally to go in and do the kind of analysis and explanation that you're describing. And that is replete in this report. It's not, staff's not to be to blame, because they did what we could do with the staff they had. But I think it is important to point out the tremendous limitations of the information that's here. As Sam says, it's a starting point. Obviously, if we were to do it again, frankly, my view would be, if we're going to do it, we should try and do it right and devote more resources. But in this day and age, the ability to do that is going to be pretty limited. But frankly, even simple things like vetting what are the news media outlets are things we obviously should give more attention to. And of course, we don't scan every news media outlet in the entire community. It's obvious, because I'm sure there are some that we didn't note, probably did carry something about the quality of life, and we don't have them on the list either. Once again, tremendous limitations in what we can do. And for that reason, I struggled bringing this to you, and I know the staff was frustrated because we'd have meetings, and I'd send them back to try and fix it some more, and there's just so very little that we can do with the amount of energy that originally went into the study to begin with.
Mr. Starbird, I mean, when you say, if this material gets in the wrong hands, you had the wrong hands in this committee in the first place.
Let me just say...
And I'm not blaming you for that.
But let me just say, in defense of staff, I mean, the standards you're suggesting we use for selection are not the standards that we use. They're much more general, property owner, resident, frankly, somebody generally with a strong interest in the topic, maybe working for a nonprofit group. We didn't go beyond those basic, simple guidelines. Maybe we should, but we didn't.
I think we, I think we should set a standard about litigant versus the city of Glendale as a threshold. Speaking of litigants against the city of Glendale, I have a card, Mr. Herbert Milano.
Thank you very much, Judge Najarian, members of the jury and city staff. My name is Herbert Milano. Prior to the Quality of Life indicators in 2002, the city of Glendale, the administration of Glendale, provided us with two reports. One report was the Status of Youth in Glendale, which till today, I still think is one of the best reports Glendale, the Glendale administration has provided. And in this particular report, it showed that, based on the total city budget of the year 2000, the city spends 1% on youth, 1% of its total budget. In the year 2001, there was another report called the Recreation and Open Space Report, and Mr. Quintero was a member of the Blue Ribbon Committee that stated and depicted the shortage of parkland in Glendale specifically. It highlighted the area south of the 134 freeway. And it is because of that particular report that I began to get more interested in this type of regular report that came out in 2002. In that report, it stated that the majority of the residents, 70% of the residents of Glendale, live in multifamily housing, and that the majority of multifamily housing owners live outside of Glendale. And in that particular report, it encouraged property owners like myself, who live outside of Glendale, to participate and become part of this community. And I was exercising that suggestion that was on that Blue Ribbon Report. I would like to show you a couple of documents from, that were obtained, obviously, from city records and city website. I'd like to point to you to a crime mapping document. It's a kind of document that I've been pushing for, for many years, and now we finally have one that copies similarly to what's in the city of Los Angeles. It is a document that basically shows on the website where the crime statistics are, and this augments the reports from the Department of Justice. If the city clerk can assist me in looking at some of the other documents, there's a picture that I want to show you of the fire truck. This is more data concerning crime in Glendale that I encourage residents to look at. And this is a little bit more relevant here. But I want to show you this for a moment. Let us assume for a moment that you have an experience of a fire truck going towards an accident, and you find that the truck here is on Adams, stuck in the middle of traffic. I would like to know, for example, what is the level of congestion that we have in southern Glendale, and how long does it take fire trucks like this to attend to a particular automobile accident that occurred on Broadway and Adams? And this is what I'm talking about, having the kind of data that is relevant that allows you to make policy. Now, I'm rushing, because I only have these few minutes, and I have to defend myself against Mr. Najarian. But my objective is for you to create policy, for you to provide information that will augment the city budget so that it lines up with the type of things that you ought to do in order to improve the quality of life for everyone. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mohill?
Mike Mohill, Glendale resident, many years. Mr. Mayor, I am disappointed in you tonight. You attacked the messenger of quality of life. He's been here many times talking about it. Because he doesn't, he's not a homeowner, or he's not a renter, makes him unqualified. However, if Mr. Caruso was part of this group and wanted to talk about it, he lives in Pasadena, I understand, would you allow him to his input here? Where are you cutting? You have people who are interested in this city, who want to get involved. I didn't put my name on this thing. I didn't want to get involved, but Mr. Milano did. Then the other question you said is, what is the Associated Press? Is that a newspaper or is that a wire service? What is Vanguard? It's an electronic news service. It's not a blog. People pay to be to that service. You may not like it, Mr. Najarian, but you know, there are things in the news press I don't like, either on the L.A. Times or the Daily News, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You want to pick and choose. This afternoon, you picked a bone with me, because I wrote something about the veterans that you disagree with me, and now you're going to take off the gloves, because you don't like me. Mr. Mayor, act like a mayor. Now, I have, I brought, I left it in my, in my desk back there. I have a magazine about the quality of life in the 100 best cities in the United States, okay? There is only four cities from California. Number one, which was number four of the cities, was Irvine. And Irvine has a population of 208,000 people, which is about the same size as Glendale. They got a C for jobs and economy, they got a C for housing, they got an A-plus for education, they got an A for arts and leisure, and an A for health. Where would Glendale be? If we're going to do some type of quality of life comparison, I'd like to know. We have parks, we have roads. Where are we spending our money? Let's not kill the messenger of quality of life. Let's not kill electronic newspapers. After all, Associated Press doesn't have their own paper, do they? I don't see their paper at the stand next to Glendale News Press. But you like the Glendale News Press, because often, it's nothing more than the arm of the city council. But that's okay, because you approve of that. So Vanguard may not agree with you, but you know, it's an alternative source. I don't always agree with Vanguard either. I don't always agree with you either, Mr. Najarian. But you're acting like the mayor for all of us. Please, act like the mayor. Thank you.
I have any other cards? Mr. Drayman?
A few things. Let me start with the last, the comments of the last speaker, it's just absurd. To equate Vanguard slander rag that's out there with AP or any other wank, call it a news service, I'm not even sure the publisher of Vanguard would call it a new, a wire service or a news, electronic news service. To my knowledge, Mr.... To my knowledge, Mr. Mohill, I don't know if you actually read any of this stuff, you know, I'm just amazed. Let's see, last time I, and I read a lot of papers, I, I've never remember the LA Times writing, having the publisher put a box around his own writings in the, in the LA Times claiming that elected officials are talking about their, their mastectomies, and talking about their maladies and their families. I don't remember the publisher hiring people to follow, public officials around their homes, talk about their children. No, that's the kind of garbage that's in this rag run by the con artist Barry Allen. It's just money-making for him, that's all, nothing else. Now, I'm not saying that some of the people whose work appears there, like Mr. Milano and others, I'm not saying that that's equal to what, what the publisher's intent is, that they have a, an opinion they want to get out. This is a way to have their, their opinions published. But my goodness, you know, I have a better question. We're talking about publications. Are you telling me that, that Asprez, Orgarc, CV Weekly, even Hal Weber's open news and government site? None of those are a part of this, and certainly, some of them wrote about the quality of life indicators. I know that because at least two of those contacted me over time, asking me questions about their articles. But let's leave that for a moment. I'm a little, I just want a clarification about a couple of things I don't understand the distinction between. Page 18 and page 17. Page 18 is dealing with ancestry distribution. And it, it shows, based on 2000, year 2000 census, shows the Armenian community here at 26.6%, I presume, of Glendale's population, and that it compares that with English, German, Irish, Iranian, Italian, and Lebanese. It would make one think that we have no, no one in the city of any, any Hispanics of any sort. We know there's a sizable-
Koreans.
Or Korean. Then you flip the page to page 17, where it says ethnicity distribution. And here you find some Hispanic population included, but in the written portion, it says, for example, 17% Latino slash Hispanic. But then you go to the pie chart for the corresponding color, the folks at home can't see this, the corresponding color, and it says 16% for what it's describing as 73% of Glendale residents. Ethnicity was projected to be white, and you go to the corresponding color, and it's showing not 73%, but 67.5%. And on and on. In other words, I'm not understanding how these numbers in the written text correlate to the pie chart under it. The numbers don't, don't correlate at all. But I, anyway, so what is the difference between, let's say, ancestry distribution and ethnicity distribution and foreign-born population distribution? Because they all are looking at completely different groups, and, and it would lead one to believe that we don't have a Hispanic population in Glendale. If you were to look at just page 18.
Right, Councilmember Drayman, members of the city council. Ethnicity distribution, these are all, these are all different variables, basically, that the US Census Bureau takes into account during their, their data collection. These issues have been brought up before by many statisticians. Over time, the Census Bureau has chosen to, to pose questions in a certain way, and it often does appear to not provide a completely accurate picture, particularly regarding the Hispanic population. Because Latino and Hispanic is combined, the, the ancestry is not, that information is not pulled out of that. So this is basically-
I guess my question is, what, what does this data, each on a separate page, what is this supposed to communicate in general, and what is it supposed to communicate to the council? Again, it's, you know, I had a professor in college that used to say, "Data without application is trivia." So, and, and again, I don't want the public to think I'm blaming you, or, or Mr. Engel, or any, it's, it's not a criticism of staff. I'm just trying to understand, understand what this is supposed to tell me. It's a page that has, it says what was measured, the percentages of various ethnicities of Glendale residents. Then it says what was found. And it, it gives a textual listing of whites 73%, Hispanic Latinos 17%, Asian 15%, and nearly 2% black, African-American. And then the pie chart under it, the numbers on the pie chart don't relate to that at all. They're a completely different set of numbers. And so, okay, yeah, and what is that, in other words, how do we apply that to give us any information where I, as an elected leader in the city, can look at this and say, "Okay, I need to make adjustments here, here, here." What, what is this telling me? It's just random trivia out of the 2000 census. That's how I'm looking at it right now.
These are, these are simple demographics.
That tell us what? What does this help us understand about quality of life in Glendale?
They're simple demographics data.
Okay, I'm going to submit, Mr. City Manager, it doesn't tell us anything. It's just a restatement over and over of bits and pieces out of the 2000 census.
For statisticians and researchers, many, many do find relevant information here, particularly when cross-tabulating with other indicators.
I would submit that information out of the 2000 US Census, yes, does provide information that statisticians and, and researchers are using. But I don't think the city of Glendale is producing a quality of, set of quality of life indicators that's been worked and reworked and reworked for the, for the purpose of helping out researchers and statisticians. There is, to my knowledge, no statisticians on this council, or local researchers, or, you know, it may surprise some of my colleagues, I have to agree with Mr. Milano on a certain, certain aspect of this. If we're going to do this, there has to be something that comes out of this that we can actually use to affect policy. You know, I don't know what, what a pie chart that does not relate to the text above it tells me as an elected official that's going to allow me to do, or enable me to do anything of benefit for the residents of Glendale in any ethnicity, in any language, in any age distribution. It, it doesn't, it, it's just data on a page. It's just, I mean, it's almost like trivia.
Your points well taken. Mr. Weaver.
Well, let's see, there was 83 different pieces of information you look like to put this together. We're going to note and file this. I don't think it's going to go sit on a shelf somewhere. I think staff's going to continue to look at it. I mean, are we going to sit here tonight and go through every single page and every single chart and pick it apart? Or am I able to-
I'd like to, Mr. Weaver.
You would? Okay, it's only 8:20. Or are we going to take this, study it, and come back to staff with our comments as long as staff? Because you said, "We have it right in here. The committee make all these recommendations." So I don't think this is a final product. I don't know when it was produced and how much you reviewed it. You reviewed it and reviewed it. Well, I just can't see that it's a note and file, put it on the shelf, and we'll pull it out five years from now and review it again. It's a living document. That means there's going to be changes made. Am I wrong, Mr. Starburt?
Well.
I am fine. We'll note and file it, forget it.
This, this is the end of this effort. We weren't going to go work on this anymore. Frankly, I think all of your points are well taken, which continue to point out the deficiencies of our ability to produce a document that purports to be something significantly more than this is. And I, and I think frankly, trying to draw the kind of information you all described could be very valuable. In these times, though, to devote the number of people and resources to that, to try and pick up a number of areas and do them justice, which I think you'd have to do in order to really provide meaningful data, is going to be very difficult given the limited resources. But if it's your desire that we continue to look at ways that we can improve on this, we'll certainly do that. But to think that this is, this is kind of a first draft and we're going to keep working on it, the intent isn't to continue to work on this.
But I, myself, I propose to review it. If I have questions, come to staff, ask questions. What does that mean? And can this be changed, or whatever? Without, you know, I don't prefer to sit here tonight and pick everyone apart because that'd be easy to do. Take a long time, too. So I want to review it. I was handed this when I sat down here tonight. I don't like having the information dumped on me at a council meeting when I'm trying to listen. I can't read two at the same time.
Mr. Mayor, if I can. Mr. Drayman makes a very good point, and that is, to the extent that this report tries to give you a sense of the quality of life in Glendale, it's probably falling tremendously short of that. It really does nothing more than tap into a number of data sources, repeat information here. Frankly, we could have a report that could, that could guide people to all kinds of different statistical areas about Glendale, which, which frankly, then people on their own can go do their research and draw their own conclusions. Unless you're going to do a much more in-depth evaluation and ask ourselves and evaluate the kinds of issues you all have raised this evening, then, as I've said before, I'm afraid this, this purports to be something more than it is. And to that extent, if somebody goes on our website and says, "Oh, a quality of life indicator about Glendale," they're going to have the same kind of frustration you all, you all have expressed this evening in trying to connect the dots between the data here and what it has to say about quality of life. Let's just take any one of them. It seems to be a bad indicator that there are, that there are more liquor sale establishments in the south part of Glendale. Yet without a lot more in-depth evaluation. You don't know that, and yet it seems to lead you down that road. And I think that's what's so frustrating about doing this kind of a report with this very limited in-depth evaluation.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is where are we going from here? Are you going to be asking us if we want staff to go back and dedicate more resources, more money-
Well, I'm not, yeah.
-to start picking it apart? It's going to be years.
I'm not recommending that you do that. I'd like to talk with staff, though, about how this gets presented on our website. Be one thing to have this booklet which purports to be something more than it is, or at least can be construed to be something more than it is, as opposed to giving people a number of places where they can go, the original sources for data for which they can look it up, they can do their research, they can look to see what indeed the Census Bureau or some of these other indicators are saying about Glendale, as opposed to trying to draw some conclusions when you really don't have a whole picture and enough data to draw the kinds of conclusion that you may be trying to draw.
Maybe you need a forward on the website that explains what this data is. Statistical data pulled from a number of different sources based on-
As, as many of you have expressed here this evening, my biggest concern, not that this sits on a shelf, but that frankly, somebody picks it up and says, "Aha, I can discern now what the quality of life is like in Glendale because this is going to tell me based on all these indicators." And they don't necessarily do that, because they're not necessarily complete.
Then there better be a forward on the link that tells the people that.
And I think, my takeaway, Mr. B., that's, that's the next step that we need to do, is how does this, how does this actually get presented?
I've let you gentlemen go back and forth. Mr. Drayman has had his hand up.
Let's be very clear. This, this is a document that is, that should be very valuable to our residents, and our, a lot of our nonprofits turn to this document in, in terms of applying for grants and funding. And this is, this is just woefully inadequate. And again, I'm, I, I want to make it very clear, I know it doesn't sound like it, probably, probably to, to staff that are, that are here with the unfortunate responsibility of having to present this and answer questions. This is not about you all. I understand, and I can read your faces, too, when you're trying to explain some of this. But what is missing from this document is, well, you could describe it several ways, relevance, a nexus, an application. It's, it's, it should have been more. And as I say, it is woefully inadequate. This is, especially when we know that organizations like Glendale Healthy Kids and any, whatever your favorite charity out in the city that is doing good work and relying on these documents, these facts and figures to help get funding and so on, and this is, this is what we have. And you can't even be sure when you look at a single page here whether you're supposed to be believing the numbers that are printed in form of text or in chart form underneath it, because they're not the same in many cases. Anyway, you know, I, I guess the other reason I'm being so adamant about it is because I was one of the people in this council that was saying, "Let's bring this forward, let's bring this forward. We need to see this. Why aren't we seeing it?" You know, and now it's here, and I'm being critical of it because this is, this is not very helpful. It's a document, all right.
Councilmember Drayman, members of the city council, staff tends to agree with you. We, we were very limited in our resources in pulling this together. And the, for instance, the city of Santa Monica has approximately a dozen dedicated staff persons to their website. And theirs is very elaborate. It, it does cross-tabulations. It, it does all of the things that, that I think this council has, would like for this document to do as well. We see a lot of potential for this document, perhaps in the future, and we absolutely commensurate with, with your issues.
Mr. Quintero.
Well, to Mr., let me start to Mr. Drayman's comment about social science. I had to take and pass two social science statistic classes in order to get my degree, so I'm up to here with social science statistics. I had hair back then, I can do that. Look, this is a very, very difficult endeavor, and poor Mr. Engel was saddled with the, with the task, but this is a very difficult assignment and a very difficult endeavor. I mean, it's so easy, and I think people that are prone to working with computers and IT people and so forth, just the idea that you can capture the human condition and assign statistical evaluations and data and draw information and inference from those statistics. So I'm, quite frankly, I'm not, I'm not surprised. The city of Glendale is a very complex city, and the idea that we're going to condense it, and as some people have been coming to that podium ad nauseam for years, that somehow, as soon as this quality of life indicator, then we would know this and we would know that. No, no, we won't. No, we won't. And I'm not impressed that Santa Monica has 12 employees working on, on these issues. Not at all. And this is a base, and hopefully, we'll be able to draw from, from some of these statistics and refine them as people who are interested in some of these particular categories, perhaps begin to work on it and, and offer more information to us that we can then catalog. But like I say, I think it was a good try, and we'll do what we can to continue to, to work on it. And I do think there's a couple of, I mean, I noticed a few pages that I think do sort of come together, make some sense, that someone can look at that particular indicator and, and get an idea of where Glendale is in comparison to other cities, and just where Glendale, Glendale is in terms of, of the city itself, and looking at specifically the financial support for the art category. Develop parkland is, is another one. But at any rate, it, it's something that, yeah, we're going to have to continue to work on. But I personally don't want to, to spend a whole lot of money and, and a whole lot of energy on something that I don't think, at the end of the day, is particularly valuable, to tell you the truth.
Hold on a second.
We're on your list. Mayor's coming. I was just discussing the different options presented before the council in terms of dealing with this report. And Mr. Howard, if we didn't want to receive this, what's an option that we have?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, excellent question. The motion before you is to receive and file. Given what I've heard from, from not only staff, but certainly the council, I would suggest that you not adopt a motion to receive and file. At very most, you look at a motion to note and file. Under parliamentary parlance, a receive and file is essentially that you're approving the document as drafted. From what I'm hearing, there's a significant concern about the content of the document. Again, without, without condemning anyone, it was just a difficult task. Noting and filing it in parliamentary parlance means basically, it's come to you, thank you.
Okay.
The other option, of course, is you can pass on the document and not adopt any motion, and just note to staff that you've got some direction, and that is perhaps look at how it's placed on the website.
Mr. Drayman.
Oh, let me ask a question. If we do nothing, how does that-
If we do nothing, how does that play out in terms of some of our nonprofits in the city that rely on this information to be presented and accepted? I mean, in that case, should we not note and file?
It doesn't even exist. We should note and file. That's what I'd like to move.
I mean, I would be inclined to support note and file.
Okay, well, I think that'd be fine.
I'll entertain a motion.
That'd be fine.
To note and file. Is there a second?
Yes, a second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Nigarian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, as we return to oral communications, discussion is limited to items not part of this agenda. Speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. See a manager or mayor for the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report, and the first card was Mr. Richard Lee.
Good evening again, Mayor Nigarian, council and staff. Again, I'm Richard Lee. I, as well as my wife, have lived here in Glendale for 31 years, 31 of it on Hen Shore Terrace in the Royal Canyon area. And I'm here to talk to you about the mansionization project that is being proposed for the street right above Hen Shore Terrace on Stewarton Way. We received a notice on July the 1st that a 4,050-square-foot house replacement was to be built at 902 Stewarton. That is, a 2,450-square-foot home is to be removed, and a new 4,050-square-foot home built in its place. Well, my wife and I were curious about this, and so the both of us and a neighbor came down to the planning department to see what was planned. And so we asked the clerk to see the files, and she brought us the files, and we started perusing through the documents, and right on the front page of the architect drawings it says 5,510 square feet, 1,460 square feet more. Well, we were stunned. We couldn't believe it. The case planner and her supervisor were not available, they were on vacation, and so another case planner came in to help us, a gentleman named Chris. He tried to help us resolve the discrepancy. He finally threw up his hands, and he said he had no answers, and he promised to get back to us later that afternoon. Well, Chris called me back six days later, and he said the 4,050 was a mistake, and the higher number was correct. Again, we were stunned. The whole process seemed rather mysterious and puzzling. And actually, a third square footage figure was published on the Glendale City website in the agenda section, and that figure being 4,710 square feet. Now presumably, the work of the planners is reviewed by numerous layers of management, yet this error went unnoticed by everyone. Well, we had discussions with our neighbors, and so therefore we had an emergency meeting at our home on July the 14th. We had 21 neighbors in attendance. All are vehemently opposed to this project. 100% of those people signed a petition, which you have in your packet, as well as others have signed it. Also, the house is ultra-modern. It's largely glass and metal, quite different from the stucco and wood trim homes of the area. Now, some of the comments of our neighbors were, "Wow, that looks like an office building. That looks like a medical office building, and that building is more appropriate for Brand Boulevard, and possibly on the cliffs overlooking the Pacific Ocean in Malibu, maybe even out in Palm Springs." Now, I did not bring a CD with the pictures, but I do have a picture that was taken from the backyard of the home right next to us. And as you can see, here we're looking up to the home at 902 Stewarton. You can see now it's a single-story home, you can just barely see the roof tiles for the crest of the hill. Now here is what we'd be looking at. I don't know if you can see that well. Here...
Just face us, that's the best.
Okay. So here's what you'd be looking at down here in that backyard. Now, there's a, excuse me, there's a black and white copy of this in your packet. Uh-oh.
Thank you. Nick Friesen is up next, Mr. Lee. Is he continuing with your theme?
Pretty much, pretty much. Again, we just couldn't believe that this could happen. We couldn't believe this to go through the planning department. We couldn't believe that all the layers of management couldn't have caught the error, and furthermore, we couldn't believe that this type of project was being planned for our area. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Friesen, followed by Al Hoffman.
Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and fellow citizens of Glendale. I'm Nick Friesen, a neighbor of the Lees and vice president of the Royal Canyon Property Owners Association. And in the absence of our president, who is out of the country, I've come before you to make a simple request that you give two simple instructions to your staff as appropriate. The first one bears on what you've heard from Richard and from others, including yourselves, this evening, and that is that staff do exercise more diligence in doing their sums. You all should know arithmetic. In reviewing these documents, immediately, we found two arithmetic errors that caused this particular planning session to be put off from last week until next week. And that's still not a lot of time during the summer when people are on vacation, getting people together to get some kind of activity, some response together. The second is that we thought, we were under the impression, that story polls would be provided. We were told by city staff that they aren't unless specifically requested. It is my opinion that story polls should be required on every project, flatlands, hillsides, wherever, where there is a change proposed in the project to the building height. So those are my two requests, that you request story polls on all projects, and that you advise staff that they should double-check their arithmetic. The other thing is, I have a copy of a letter giving some thoughts from the Royal Canyon Property Owners Association for each of the council members. Thank you.
Thank you. Al Hoffman?
Mayor Nigarian, council and staff, Al Hoffman, resident of Glendale. Just a correction to what Mr. Friesen said. The hearing is tomorrow. Next week is tomorrow. It was going to be last Wednesday. It is tomorrow, not next week, as he stated. So the hearing is tomorrow morning at 9:30. I am speaking on behalf of the Glendale Homeowners, Corning and Council. We are going to support the Royal Canyon Property Owners' opposition to this project. I have an electronic vote going around email. Everybody's on vacation. We're dark in July and August, so I believe we'll be ready next, in two weeks, we'll have our vote completed, and then we'll be presenting our letter like we did for the Esmeralda project, the same thing. Then I was signed up to do oral communication, so can I continue on with other? I was just making that statement there. When I talked to RD, I really wanted to speak in oral communication, so he said I could only have one card. So I wanted to follow up on Mr. Weaver's comment about bicyclists. I've encountered this so many times. They go through red lights, they don't, it's just amazing how there aren't more deaths with these guys. And I was going down Canyatta Boulevard, there were four abreast in one of the lanes, and I honked at them, and it flipped me off. And, you know, I said, "Wow." You know, they just literally said, "Hey, we're entitled to this whole lane." And there was a lot of traffic on Canyatta Boulevard, you know, so it is a problem, and bicyclists need to be more aware of what's going on. I believe they have to follow the laws. Getting to the issue of the documents you all just discussed, I have a question for the mayor. How many of the city employees who worked on this document are residents of Glendale, if that's a criteria? Is it that they have to be in Glendale to work on this and publish such a document? You said that nobody could be out of the city, participate in such a document preparation. I was trying to clarify what you meant by that.
I have to answer you later, Mr. Hoffman. Why don't you go through with your comments and...
Okay, then I have a comment for the gentleman about unions. I'd like to make him aware of the fact that I worked my whole career at JPL and TRW. We were non-union, and I'd say that we did a tremendous job not being non-union. According to his policy, because we're not unioned, we're not doing very good work, and I would take him to task in what JPL, what we did at TRW have accomplished. We were not unioned, and we were asked many times, we had union people coming in, and all the employees voted against the union. They didn't want to be unionized. So it's not that everybody in the world wants to be union. And mayor, I just have to say I was very disappointed in your actions this evening about Mr. Milano. You are the mayor. You need to have a little bit more professionalism in your task. You don't go put somebody down like you did that. You're showing your own feelings. You can't do that. You're the mayor of the town, of the city, and you have to respect everybody's opinion. And the way you chastised a person that's trying to do something, maybe he's wrong a lot of times, but he's trying to do something, you should be thankful that people come here and try to do something for the city. But your actions this evening were, I would say, were disgraceful, and I was very disappointed. Thank you.
Richard Espiritu, followed by Raul Correga.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council and staff. I am Richard Espiritu. I want to finish up with my conversation of my last week's presentation. Mr. Howard, I would strongly suggest that Mr. Aldesco become familiarized with Public Law 110-325, came effective January the 1st of 2009. One of the issues that I'd like to go over is Barden versus Sacramento. This was a case that was, the City of Glendale filed an amicus brief on behalf of Sacramento, and Barden sued Sacramento for accessibility on the streets. One of the issues that they talked about in Barden versus Sacramento were guy wires that made it difficult for people who were visually impaired or had mobility impairments to get around. And it reaffirmed the Americans with disability that the people with disabilities have the right to the roads, the public access. Going to public access, there's a street here in Glendale that's called Palmer. There has been a lot of work done on that street, and I am very glad to see that the city intends to put in a number of trees. I love trees. I think we need more oxygen. However, when they put in the sidewalks and started to take care of planting the trees, the distance between the edge of the sidewalk where the tree is supposed to be planted to the accessibility is about 36 inches. Mrs. Beers, I'm sure you're aware of what I'm going at. This street is now inaccessible for individuals with, in wheelchairs. And I didn't, it sounds like I'm going back to my days of being the streetwalk monitor. But so be it. I didn't intend to go out and take the pictures of everything, but I did go out and I did measure it. I want to leave this City Council and staff with a closing thought. It's a quotation, and are you, are your hearts hardened? Do you have eyes but fail to see, and have ears but fail to hear, and do not remember? I've come to the City Council and talked about accessibility time and time and time again. I was even asked by Councilwoman Drayman to take my camera up to Montrose, which I did, caused a lot of headaches with the pictures. I don't want to start taking pictures here in the City of Glendale because it costs me money, but if I have to start doing PowerPoint presentations again, I will do that. I started doing PowerPoint presentations because I believed that it was important for the street to come to the City Council because I didn't know if the City Council was going to go to the street. So I brought them in, and I wanted everybody to see it and to know what I'm talking about. So if I have to start doing my PowerPoint presentations, I'll be more than happy to do it. But I really would like you to think about this quotation. You have eyes but you don't see, you have ears and you don't hear, why don't you remember? I will keep coming back, and I will be your conscience, even if I have to start walking the streets again. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, councilmembers, and city staff. My name is Raul Correga. I live in Glendale. I've lived in Glendale for many years. I graduated from Hoover High. I've had two boys who graduated from Hoover High. I worked for an ex-mayor. I've worked for, I've been, I also work in Glendale. I've been in Glendale pretty much all my life. Glendale is my hometown, and I'm not going anywhere. I have seen much development and construction in the city, mostly good. I live at 1664 Cumberland Terrace. My house is right below the property, 1700 Valley View Drive. My property line borders that property. I'm here because I'd like to see 1700 Valley View Drive completed. What's happening to my neighbor, Bill Caribbean, I feel is unwarranted. I'm one of the neighbors that's probably the most affected. I'm right below his property, and I favor the project to continue. I've seen construction process for some time. I've looked at some pictures. My neighbor, Bill Caribbean, and Abe, the contractors who have worked on this property, they've worked hard in compiling with all the inspections and even with some of the neighbors' demands. The property is slowly becoming a jewel, and I would like to see that process completed. The balcony is beautiful, the view is spectacular, and this property has a tennis court, and I think that's been the concern for most people. The tennis court would be... The tennis court would be a beautiful addition to homes like these. Numerous inspections have been on this property, and this property is 90% complete. All it needs is 10%, and the city has stopped. I ask that you do the right and lawful thing, allow 1700 Valley View Drive to complete it, for it to complete, which allow him to show the final product before all the critics, draw their conclusions, and it would be a beautiful house if you allow it to just proceed. A while back, there was a neighbor down from my street on Cumberland Road, and they encountered an obstacle with the building process. The city made the right decision and allowed it to continue. That house was 165 Cumberland Road, and it's a beautiful house now. It's one of the most beautiful homes. City made the right choice there, and I ask that the city make the right choice again. You have the opportunity to make the right choice. I ask that you honor the permit process and allow my neighbor and my friend, Bill Caribbean, to continue with this project. All it needs, all it needs is 10%, and it's completed. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Herbert Milano, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the City Council and City Staff. My name is Herbert Milano. I've been coming to speak before City Council since 2001, when we had an issue with multifamily housing. And before that, I admit, I did not know much about Glendale government. I'm assuming that the streets got cleaned, the place was safe, and that's all I needed to do. But since that time, I have learned a great deal about Glendale. And I learned a lot about it because I raised my kids here. Mr. Najarian, my children have attended elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools. And if I take the whole span of my three children here, that's about, I don't know, close to 15, 17 years in experiencing life in Glendale with the children. I know that when you run for office, you move your kids from private school into the public school. I don't know if they're still there. I heard that they no longer are there, they're back to private school. But I think it's relevant, because in a way, it shows a bit of the type of politician actions that are often very common. You know, appeal to the general public, appear that you're concerned. Well, I'll tell you what my concerns have been. When my kids were small, I didn't know that it was an uncommon thing to have to drive two, two and a half miles to find an adequate park. It was when I saw this particular report on the, on the quality of parkland and open space in Glendale, of which Mr. Quintero was a member, the Blue Ribbon Committee, that it confirmed all of the experiences that I've had. When I was a soccer coach, we, I found out that all of the games were up north, north of the 134, primarily around, you know, the foothill area, and La Crescena, and the, you know, all the parks. And I basically managed to see and experience Glendale in a very unique way. And I kept asking myself, why aren't there sufficient parkland, adequate for kids to have sports and exercise and after-school activities? Well, there was another report that appeared in 2001, which is the Quality of Youth Report. And in that report, it laid out everything, all of the problems that Glendale has with regard to its lack of sufficient funding for youth. And I began to open up my eyes to how a city works. How does a government provide for its public? And I found a significant amount of deficiencies that I brought before you, or the councilmen before you. There was no antagonistic approach from my part, I think it was during those years, until the people that I promoted, that I encouraged, that I helped out in getting elected, basically reneged on their promises to me. I used to take this document that came out in 2002 and said, look, you're going to run for office, you should know about these problems in Glendale. Look on this page. Look at the investments in Glendale. Look at the problems with obesity. Look at all of these issues that are relevant for creating policy. And yet, once you get elected, you forget about it. So basically, you blow me off, just like you blew everybody off. You know, you make all these promises while you're running for office, and then once you come for office, some transformation takes place that you figure, I don't have to take care of the promises that I gave you. So I decided to come forward and say, okay, I'm going to hold your feet to the fire, to the promises that you gave me personally. Other people don't know about it, but I come over here to speak about it, because it is, at the end of the day, a very unique opportunity that we have in the world to be able to come before you, to be for a government and to say, wow, you are our government. We promoted you, we've helped you get to the position that you are. And it is unique, because it doesn't exist the same way in other countries. I know what it is to live under a dictatorship. I lived as a child under a dictatorship. And I have a very special place in my heart for this country, and for the manner in which we can create a government that is truly special. But unfortunately, too many people run for office with no intent of living by that concept. America is a very unique place, and I will continue to fight for good government. And if you don't like it, Mr. Najarian, you can continue to repeat it as often as you want. But that's what I'm here for, in order to help create a government that is truly responsive to the public and that becomes accountable. And for that, we need information. I hope that my words do not seem too rushed, too harsh, but it is my intent to continue coming here, even though I no longer live in Glendale. Thank you very much.
Margaret Hammond, followed by Charles Hooker.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the Council, staff, and audience. My name is Margaret Hammond. Well, let me say one thing. Some of those bicyclists you talk about, I wouldn't mind if they got run over, because I am against them riding on the sidewalks. I've talked about this before. I was at Ross's over here in the shopping center, and I nearly was knocked down. I virtually had to grab onto one of those kiosks, or I, he would have knocked me down. And just looked at me like he had a perfect right to be riding his bicycle in there. And over and over, the streets, the sidewalks are for pedestrians, not for bicyclists. And I have seen bicyclists on the street and police patrol cars going by. It's against the law. And I believe that since they want bike lanes, I think pedestrians should be protected as to be able to walk. I have osteo, and if I was knocked down by that man, I probably would be in the hospital. So therefore, I feel that there should, that is one law that should be enforced. No bicycles on the streets. Now, last month, the Moonlight Cafe down there on Chevy Chase was granted a CUP with the condition that they were a restaurant. They would be open from 7:00 to 11:00. They would have a menu. They would be, you would be able to go in there and order food and so forth. Last night, I was at a meeting at my Adams Hill homeowners regarding National Night Out for next week, and one of the people said she went in there, they refused to wait on her, they said it's a private party, you can't come in, we won't serve you, and that was that. Now, that's completely against what they were granted as a CUP. Now you tell me, is that right? I don't think so. And I think something should be done about it. This has been going on for a couple of years now, the same thing. Now, the, another thing is the Saturday night event with the banners, raising the funds for the banners for the servicemen, was a wonderful event. Really was. The music was great, the food was wonderful. And that food was provided by a native restaurant, Barrigan's. I don't know how many of you know him. And I've known him for, since 1960s. His father owned the Barrigan's down on Sunset, and I used to go there many years ago. After our drinking and dancing, we'd go there to Barrigan's. And his father would keep the restaurant open for us till 1:00 and 2:00 in the morning sometimes. And it's wonderful food. And there's one here in Glendale on Central, and he provided the, he catered and donated all the food for that event. There were about 100 people, and everyone really had a great time. It was a well-done event. And then, of course, my last and final is my National Night Out we're having down at Pacific. We still need some volunteers and some help anyway, financially, whatever, that you would like to give us. We'd love to have for, you know, prizes and food, anything that you're willing to come along. And Lenora Solis is more than happy to take your food or donations or whatever. She's the gal that runs it and puts in a lot of time and effort, even though, as I say, she lives up north and does, but is, we feel that we're part of that community and that they are the ones that need help to get out the neighborhood services, I mean, the neighborhood watch. The neighborhood watch. He's looking at me. So that the, you know, the crime is probably a little, because of the density of the area, we get this, that there's more crime. Yeah, there's more crime, because we're packed in there like sardines. So naturally, you know, it looks like there is more crime, not that they're relating to the rest of the city as far as density. So we really need help with that event. We had, as I said, about three, maybe 400 people last year, and we're hoping we'll have the same again this year. We're going to really go for it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Charles Hooker, followed by Robert Surr.
Mayor, City Council, my name is Charles Hooker. I live in the, excuse me, I live in the Verdugo Woodlands, and I want to thank you for repairing our streets in the woodland. My family came to Glendale just about 100 years ago, and this is when it was a Spanish land grant. And we had, they had always had the days of Verdugos, and Dora Verdugo and all of the Verdugo family. But lately, the hard-working Mexican-American has been forgotten, as well as the Jewish community and the Irish, which I am. And just all you read in the paper is all of this lately, of a new group that's come to Glendale. And it's, I'm hoping that Glendale can still support all of the people that live in Glendale instead of one group. And also, I would like to say, I am, I have known, my father got me kind of interested in Glendale politics. Zelma Vog, Bob Wyon, several other mayors, they were all gentlemen, they all conducted business. And the way that our mayor today took on Mr. Milano, I am really surprised and shocked. And I hope that our mayor will apologize to the man. Thank you.
Robert Surr, followed by Anahid Pinedja.
Originally, I was going to speak about the war in Iraq, how it's affecting this country, but the gentleman from JPL, who I would have paid $50 to say what he said, is going to lead me into a union rant. I think I mentioned earlier that I consider myself an expert on unions. I've been in various unions for 44 years, starting as a retail clerk, studio worker, carpenter. So I know a little bit about unions. I know that almost all non-union workers, other than in the technical or professional field, would like to be in a union, and I'll explain why. But before I get started, this, this evening has been highly entertaining for me and highly informative. I was told years ago that if you want to offer criticism, keep in mind there's three types: instructive, constructive, and destructive. A lot of my fellow Glendaleans here tonight engage in destructive criticism, which gets you nowhere. I try to follow that advice, but the hardest advice to follow is our own advice. Earlier this evening, my criticisms were defensive and abrasive, and for that, I apologize, and I'll try to keep calm for the rest of the evening. The unions, the union that I can speak with most authority is the carpenters' union. A union carpenter has the advantage of a four-year apprenticeship. Non-union has none. Union carpenters have holiday and vacation pay. Non-union has no guarantee of those things. Union carpenters have a guarantee of health, dental, and vision care. Non-union typically have none of those. Union carpenters have a much safer work environment, less deadly than a non-union worksite. Statistics point that out perfectly. Unions have protection from gender or ethnic discrimination. Non-unions have no protection from gender or ethnic discrimination to speak of. Union carpenters have the opportunity to participate in union democracy and become union officials. Non-union carpenters obviously have none of that. Union carpenters are guaranteed a pay adequate to provide security for their family. Non-union carpenters get what they're offered. A carpenter that works for 30 years in the union can have almost a full pension at the time of retirement, no matter when he retires. He doesn't get the medical benefits till 62, but if he works 30 years, he can have more than an adequate pension, comfortable enough to support him and his family through his life. So when people try to tell me, well, there's a lot of people that don't want unions, there are a lot of people that don't want unions. Often, those are professional people that are paid adequately and have all the benefits that they want to enjoy. But I will never allow people to spew the lie that most people don't want to be in unions. Excuse me, I'm getting abrasive. I like to end on, well, yeah, that's about all I got. I'd like to end on a kind of upbeat note. This is a story about a Glendale police motorcycle officer. He pulls over a guy coming down the 2 freeway, goes up to the car, and he says, sir, I'm citing you for speeding. You're doing 80 miles an hour, and I notice you don't have your seatbelt on. The guy says, officer, I knew you were going to need my license, so I had to take my seatbelt off. His wife says, honey, you know you always keep your wad on the console, and you never wear your seatbelt. Please don't lie to the officer. Guy says, will you keep your mouth shut? The officer says, I'm citing you for 80, and I've been following you for quite a while. The guy says, officer, I had my cruise control set at 65. I couldn't have been doing 80. The wife says, honey, remember when we bought the car, and the salesman asked you, she wanted cruise control, and you said, I'd never use it? We don't even have cruise control. He's getting really upset. He says, will you please keep your mouth shut? She goes, why are you so upset anyway? You know, for the last hour, you've been doing well over 100. He's really getting obscene with her at this point. And the cops, the officer says, ma'am, is your husband always this abusive? She says, Jim is hardly ever this way. Well, except when he's been drinking too much. Thank you very much.
Anahid Pinedja, followed by Mike Mohill.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the City Council, attorneys, managers, staff, and the audience. My name is Anahid Pinedja. My issue today related to a smoking ban or vacancy that passed by the city. Since the law has become in full force and effect, the same tenant who lives below me always sits on the chair in entrance of our apartment building, smokes and smoke. Many years, we have been affected by secondhand tobacco smoke. I represented also before city meeting, a photo of ashtray full of butt cigarettes that gathered on purpose to harass us. For that reason, I referred to Neighborhood Services. The city representative, Armin Neme, gave him verbal warning to remove that ashtray and not smoke in common areas. After verbal warning, he kept continuing smoking. In March of 2010, again, the city inspector came door to door and distributed updated public of a smoking policy. The same tenant did not open his door. Just after the inspector left, he came out, not only continued smoking, but also gathered the other tenants and organized to harass us in order to get us moved out. This man plays leading role in the apartment building. This man plays leading role in the apartment building, as he harassed us before for the placement of parking sign. He is always acting, sorry, he is always acting as having a full privilege over any other tenant because he is the oldest tenant, saying that he is a free man. This is America. Those tenants don't want to comply to city policy, even though the landlord, after listening to the matter, said, "Any smoker doesn't want to obey the policy, should go and complain to city." But there are many incidents of being harassed by the same tenant, Unit A and C. They both sitting on chairs of both side of the main entrance and smoke, giving approval to the next property tenant to park her car in our parking structure, blocking us, and also leaving her dog in parking, sorry, to defecating and urinating without scoping. Also, the tenant number C knocking the door when my sister alone at home, intimidating her for making excuse for cleaning the stairs of the main entrance of the building, deliberately holding the hose and sprayed water up inside our bus not only one time, removed the hallway ceiling bulb light and not replaced it, making excuse, "There is mosquitoes," which is not true, leaving us insufficient light to see who is knocking our door at late night as he did. Verbal insult, hate expression, calling us Turks publicly, fake accusation. The same tenant, number C, is sharing with us with the balcony rear of the building. On July 13, after 9:00 PM, hit our door and balcony window with his feet, threatening us to remove our small box of belongings and towels from balcony, acting on behalf of landlord. He is not afraid from anyone, but his belongings are still there up to date. The same tenant last month made a scandal, assaulted and battered the boss tenant, number A, and house unit on June 18, after midnight, 1:00 AM. The tenant of both units called the police. They were very angry on that tenant and said, "One of the tenant, Mr. Ardash, how could the landlord rent this unit to same man like this without knowing his background? We are definitely aggravated tenants. If the law requires do not smoke in common area, they still breaking the law. How can we protect our right as a tenant? The actions of this tenant has amounted to breach our right to quiet enjoyment of our tenancy. But my landlord, just listening, her silence is a sign of retaliation to us for exercising our rigor right. I am asking your innovation and help in this matter in our heart situation. Thank you very much for listening."
Mike Mohill, followed by Glenn Webb.
My name is Mike Mohill, Mayor Najarian, council members. The culture of Randy Adams. Mr. City Manager Jim Starbird was quoted in the Glendale news press, quote, "Glendale won't pick up Adams pension, July 23, 2010." Quote, "The state pension system will hopefully reject sky-high payouts," referring to former Glendale Chief of Police Randy Adams and two other city officials from the city of Belle as gaming the system. So where did Mr. Adams learn to game the system? Where else but in the city of Glendale, where city officials take union money and then sit down months later and negotiate lucrative contracts for the unions? It's all about money and power, and how much can I get from the taxpayers without them knowing about it? The recent union negotiations with the firefighters is a case in point. The union rejects changing their staffing policy from constant manning of our fire stations to on-demand, which would reduce staffing personnel. Reducing working hours also reduced the city payroll and pension obligations. Instead, both parties agreed union members would have to work an additional five years to the ripe old age of 55. City would kick in another half a percent to the union's already lucrative pension plan. Upon approval of a new firefighters' contract, our city manager and council members doted all over the firefighters and themselves. The union probably laughed their way to the bank. Mr. Starbird criticizing Randy Adams and the city of Belle is nothing more than the pot calling the kettle black. If there isn't sufficient money in the general fund to pay our union employees, our politicians, with the guidance of Mr. Starbird, just raise the city utility rates and transfers that money to the union employees. Maybe one day, my fellow Glendaleans will finally wake up and smell the coffee before it's too late, because Glendale is a city of Belle in the making. Mayor Najarian, last week you said I should not question your patriotism after all the sacrifices your family has made for this country. You mentioned your brother gave up a lucrative dental career to serve in Iraq. Your brother-in-law also served three tours in Iraq. As you suggested, I went to the war memorial in Montrose on Saturday morning, and I saw the name Corman Michael A. Najarian, 1945 through 1966. He was only 21 years of age. The sacrifice of your family, I do honor. My question is not your patriotism, sir, but your commitment to our veterans. I served three years in the military, of which one year was in Vietnam. When speaking about sacrifice, I'm not talking about, I am talking about soldiers coming home disabled, limbs missing, and very, very despondent. When I was discharged, there was no military parade for me and my comrades in arms, as it was just best to blend into society and move on with one's life. People even called us baby killers. Remember Mr. Quintero? Mr. Najarian, you will never know how that feels unless you were one of us. My 85-year-old uncle was a pilot during World War II. Does that make me a pilot, too, and feel his pain and injuries? My brother is a dentist. Does that make me a dentist? If my brother robs a bank, does that make me a robber? I don't think so. So Mayor Najarian, don't talk to me about your family's commitment for this country. Tell me what you have done. What are you going to do for our veterans who really need our help? Show me. Show all the veterans your action and not everybody else's action. Thank you.
Glenn Webb, followed by Lynn Foster.
We have, sir, we have a policy that any multimedia be given to the clerk in advance of the meeting, so it can be loaded and screened for propriety.
Actually, a check for viruses to ensure it doesn't infect the system.
Welcome to address the council.
I was going to talk about story polls.
You can have five minutes.
I have a lot to say without charge. We have another mansionization project coming up here. Glenn Webb, I live at 1670 Arbolas Drive in Glendale. This is another example of a situation where the public is not being provided accurate and complete information to give input. This particular instance is a conditional use permit application, which will be heard tomorrow morning. Richard Lee has already discussed some of the details of that project. I was going to mention, in addition, that we had dealt with the same kind of an issue on the Esmeralda project, 18,200 square foot home that was built up on a 57-degree slope right immediately above our house. We requested in writing story polls, accurate information and so forth, when this project went to the design review board for preliminary review two times. We met with Mr. Ogani and Mr. Foy to ask about story polls at that time, and he said that he had no authority to request story polls, that that could only be done by the designer review board. We, of course, had already reviewed the ordinance regarding story polls, and we didn't read it that way at all. But in any case, there's been no story polls put up in Glendale. These projects continue to be submitted. The staffs continue to accept whatever the applicants submit as gospel without verifying. They continue to ignore public comment and input. The Esmeralda project in particular, we submitted a 65-page detailed analysis of 35 areas of noncompliance with the code, state law, problems with the process, defective notice, and that was completely ignored. The designer review board voted it out three to one to send it on for final. They almost got to a CUP hearing about six months ago, and we submitted again another detailed analysis as to why the project was not even ready for a CUP review. We managed to stop that CUP hearing because of a whole variety of problems. It hasn't come back yet, but we do expect it to come back. Again, we've asked for story polls on that project so that the public could see it. I have some view graphs showing what the project would look like sitting up on the hill where it is, and contrasting that with the information submitted by the applicant with the staff report, which didn't deal with any of these issues. And we're just very frustrated that these projects keep coming up, they keep getting approved, public commentary continues to be ignored, story polls are not required, apparently, despite the ordinance. I think with respect to story polls in particular, we need a, perhaps a new ordinance or a modification to require them for designer review board or CUP and variance hearings especially. There's also a view in the planning department that the conditional use permit process is somehow doesn't need to deal with things like neighborhood compatibility and size compatibility and architectural compatibility and impacts on the neighborhood, despite the fact that state law requires positive findings that the projects are compatible with the general plan, which includes things like the hillside ordinance, for example, which requires compatibility in size, architectural style, bulking and massing, and so forth. These things are completely ignored with respect to the conditional use permit hearing, according to the planning staff. Their position is that that's left up to the designer review boards. But the conditional use permit is a higher-order issue. It's an entitlement. A conditional use permit is given to build an 18,200-square-foot house on a particular lot with a particular set of drawings, particular architectural style. The designer review board is not going to be able to stop it. It's just not. And so we think we still have some serious problems with the process. Again, I came here just to comment on the story poll issue. It's particularly applicable to the house that's going to be reviewed tomorrow morning. It'll be very applicable to the Esmeralda project if that happens to come up again. And we'd just like to suggest that the council, perhaps get together with the planning staff and rewrite that ordinance so that these, so the story polls are required, so that the citizens can get a genuine view of what these projects are going to look like and that they don't have to go in after the fact and appeal and so forth. That's what I had to say.
Mr. Webb? Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and staff. It's been a long night. Everybody must be exhausted by now, including me. My name is Lynn Foster. I live on Arbolas Drive in the Royal Canyon Homeowner Group. That was my husband, Glenn Webb, who just came, and he stepped on a lot of the things I was going to say. He was going to talk about story polls. I was going to talk about CUPs. But I wanted to just kind of fill in a couple of blanks that, and maybe put things in a little perspective. The problem I see is that a lot of times people go first for their conditional use permit and then later to the design review board. And from our experience, both with our project, the proposed project behind us, and with the Stewarton Way one that's going to be taking place tomorrow, the problem is the CUP is a very important entitlement. And the problem that I've encountered is that the planning department does not believe that anyone has the authority to require story polls other than the design review board. Now, as I was reading it, I think it says aiding in the design review process, which I would think would include conditional use permits, because conditional use permits to be granted also, in each case, has to be found the proposed use will be consistent with the various elements and objectives of the general plan, which includes the hillside design guidelines, which means that mass and size and so forth are important before a CUP can be granted. So if it's true that no one has the authority to require story polls other than the design review board, if that is in fact the way you intended the law to be, maybe it could be changed or clarified so that the hearing officer, who is going to be hearing a conditional use permit hearing, would be able to require story polls, especially in very controversial, you know, projects where something is alleged something will be looming over other homes and be highly visible. Once a conditional use permit is granted, I think it's very difficult for the design review board to say, "Well, this house can't be done at all that way." I mean, that house has been granted on that lot, and maybe tweaked, but I don't know that it can be deemed inappropriate at that point. So I'm just begging for the neighbors who are around us and for us that we be given a chance to see what something's going to look like before it's too late. Thank you so much, and it's been a late night. Thank you.
Thank you. Auntie Trinidad? Auntie Trinidad?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, staff. On June 15, I presented you with images of the swimming pool and tennis court construction at the property 1700 Valley View Drive. And one must reasonably assume that none of you council members would want your council tenure and council legacy to be associated with these images, particularly with an asterisk, built without design review process. I welcome the opinion of my next-door neighbor, Mr. Raoul Carraga, that this is a spectacular project. If you look at the project, it really spectacularly dominates the landscape. When I came here on November 15, I made three requests. Number one, that the temporary work stoppage orders be made permanent. And in support of that request, I'd like to submit a petition signed by several of the concerned neighbors and citizens requesting that the work stoppage be made permanent. I made a second request, which is to have the construction dismantled. The third request is to involve the public and inform the public as to how the city is going to treat this anomalous construction and permitting. Fast forward to now, six weeks later, the public and the neighbors have greater reason to be gravely concerned. When I talked to the senior planner in charge of the project after I came here to this chamber... after I came here to this chamber, to ask him about how or what applicable rules applied in the construction on subject property on cantilevered construction, he branded me twice of being misinformed and in error. And I requested him, "Before you come to that conclusion, would you please review the file?" And when he did, he came back to me on the phone and said, "Darn, these constructions are cantilevered." Two weeks ago, I called the same senior planner and asked for an update. "May I please know what the city is doing right now? What intends to do? When the public is going to get involved? When the public is going to be invited to participate?" He had two answers. One, "I don't know." And the second is, "I can't tell." This begs the question. First, what is the level of supervision there is from the planning director down to the senior planner down to the junior planner involved in the approval of this project? Number two, prior to the issuance of the work stoppage, how long did the city know that there were some issues with the approval process? Which city officials knew? And what did those officials know? And who initiated the work stoppage? Number three, when will the city involve the public and the neighbors to be able to participate in the resolution of this issue? I just hope that the city, in taking time and in being silent, is really trying to find a way to enforce its own code requirements and process. I just hope that the city is doing what it needs to do to win the public from that mentality of, "Build now, legalize later." I hope that the city's position is not dominated by the financial concerns affecting the property owner, affecting the city and the liability, but rather be concerned with how it may uniformly enforce its code requirements. Not too long ago, maybe eight, 10 years ago, I came before this council and vigorously pursued a project that was done also without a design review. I have no personal animus against the property owner in this case at 1700 Valley View, nor did I have a personal animus on the project on Royal Canyon. But I just hope that, I have one request of Mr. Hagani, if I may borrow from President Reagan, inimitable President Reagan. Mr. Hagani, please demolish this construction or hillside construction monstrosities. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards, or do I? I know there was a card that just came out. Okay. Ms. Friedman.
Mr. Howard, can you clarify the, just briefly clarify the story poll issue? Because it is, it's not that we have, that there is no ability to demand story polls for a project, but certain projects and by certain people and groups. For example, the planning director has discretion in certain circumstances.
In certain circumstances. However, in this particular circumstance, I can't clarify it without working with the planning director and with my staff. So I cannot, I wish I could, but I can't give you an answer related to the specific issue that was raised tonight.
The ordinance that was passed by council most recently gives the planning, the director of planning, or I guess now community planning, to, thank you, to require story polls in certain conditions, certain applications. And when houses are proposed in certain areas, the design review board can also in certain circumstances. In any case, I don't know whether it applies to this particular case. I think we're all learning a lot about this case tonight and will continue to. The other thing, just as an informational issue, I guess Mr. Spirit too has left. In any case, there is noting that yesterday, Monday, July 26, 2010, marks the 20th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act. And somehow that slipped by and should have been mentioned, I think. So I thought I'd take the opportunity to do that. Thank you.
Ms. Friedman and Mr. Quintero.
Sure, just a few things to drag out the night any longer. But first, the lady who was having the issues with the smoking in her apartment, I think she's gone. But I would suggest to, either to Neighborhood Services or to the community policing, that we at least try to mediate this. I just worry about escalations between neighbors and especially when people start feeling harassed or feeling threatened. I just, if we intervene sooner rather than later, it's my understanding that that's, I'm sort of looking for someone who, I don't know who I'm looking at, but I understand that with the community policing, that part of the goal is to mediate in these situations before they become actual police activities. Mr. Engel, did you?
Councilwoman Friedman, members of the city council, I met with Mrs. Panagian yesterday afternoon, and her report to you was a synopsis of my probably half-hour meeting with her yesterday. We have already arranged for our code enforcement officer to work with the community police officer. Again, both have been out to the property numerous times before. This isn't, it's a recurring problem. Mrs. Panagian obviously is quite concerned.
Okay, so we don't need to get into it. I just want to be sure that we're on top of it. And then, in terms of the neighbors who came in about the CUP and the project, you know, we can't talk about the project. It hasn't been noticed. We can't get into that. But I would like to ask staff maybe to come back, at least with maybe a small report if my colleagues would agree, about story polls and CUP and timing. Because I think they make a good argument that there are times when you may want the story polls up for a CUP hearing as opposed to just design review. And if our code doesn't allow for that or if planning feels that that's not the optimal time, maybe we could talk about it and make it a discussion. Just a few things, though, since I've been on a design review for about five years. There are story polls that go up around town. There was another one on Valley View just a year or two ago where they did story poll the house. So it is a tool that's slowly being integrated as we're getting more and more projects, you know, kind of coming back in. We are seeing more of them, and they are extremely helpful. So I agree that with something like this, that's on a hill, that's big, you kind of want to get them up there sooner rather than later because you either want to know or, you know, not know that you're going to be seeing it. I did want to make a little comment, though. I just couldn't let it go by just about the compatibility issue and the architecture issue. First of all, I don't believe that the CUP is the process is the right place to talk about design because they're not the right people, for one thing. You have a designer review board that's made up of people that are sort of hand-chosen to deal with design issues, whereas a CUP hearing officer really is not that person. So I don't think that's the appropriate place to go into design. And I don't want to talk about, obviously, the design of this. I haven't even seen it. But in general, I think we just want to be careful to not, to try to separate out things like mass and scale and quality of design from actual design style. I just think it's a dangerous slope to start going down the, "We think every house should look the same or be in the same style to be compatible." Some of the most interesting houses in the city and in the state and the country were ones that were very different from the houses around it. My house was built in 1954 in a very Spanish colonial revival neighborhood. I love my house. I didn't want a Spanish colonial revival house as much as I liked them. I wanted a mid-century modern house. I think it's very compatible, but at the time, it was probably somewhat shocking to the neighbors. So we always have to keep that in mind, too. You want to be able to go forward. I know you all know that. But I just wanted to put that out there. And lastly, I wasn't going to rise to Mr. Weaver's bait about the bicycle incident, but since he sort of riled up the crowd, I did want to respond. You know, I don't condone cyclists breaking the law by any means. It's foolish, and it certainly sets a bad example at a time where people who ride bicycles kind of want to be setting a good example and want the neighborhoods to want them. So it's counterproductive and dangerous and foolish. But as someone who bike commutes quite often, I know what it's like to be honked at by cars. It happens to me not occasionally, not even very often. I'd say pretty much every day I get honked at by someone. And I ride exactly where you're supposed to ride when you're on a bicycle, out of the door zone, away from things that are in the curb. But a lot of people think that you're supposed to be way on the right side of the road, out of their way. Before I talk about that, I want to back up for a second. I find it really interesting that in a city where we have one of the worst traffic ratings, one of the worst environments for pedestrians and bicyclists in terms of automobile accidents, that rather than people coming in and saying, "Another pedestrian was hit by a car. This has got to stop." That happens occasionally, but that people instead are getting angry about cyclists who, when they break a law, which they shouldn't be doing, run the risk of really hurting themselves, but really not so much other people. Whereas we don't hear a lot about the motorists who really, I mean, look, I bike in. You know, I'm motor too, so it's not like we're different species. But when somebody who's on a bicycle breaks a law, they really, they run the risk of hurting themselves and not usually so much other people. Person running over Margaret Hammond is an exception. They shouldn't be doing that either. But let's be sure that we all understand the law. And I wanted to just address Mr. Hoffman, my friend Mr. Hoffman's incident on Kenyatta. Yes, the law says when you're on a bicycle that you should ride as far to the right of the road as is safe. It also says that if you feel that you're in a lane that for whatever reason is not safe to be passed by a car because of width or speed, you are allowed to take the road. Those four bicyclists on Kenyatta that were riding together were doing so because they felt that, given the speed of that road and the narrowness of the lane, it was the safest way for them to proceed. The law absolutely allows that. So before we start harassing the bicyclists, let's be sure we really know the law. In terms of riding on the sidewalk, it's not allowed where you were reporting in front of a business. It is allowed in residential neighborhoods. Let's be sure we know the law. With pedestrians, I've heard people say, "If you're not in a crosswalk, it's jaywalking." Not true. Crosswalks don't have to be marked to be legal crosswalks. So there's enough bad behavior to go around. I just hope that we all watch out for each other, respect each other, and make the roads safe for everybody. And keep in mind that the person on the bicycle is the most vulnerable person on that road, not you in the car who maybe feels a little inconvenience because you have to slow down because of them. They're risking their life to be out there. So, you know, give them that extra few feet because, you know, it might be me. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Quintero.
I am also an avid cyclist, and I do want to continue to promote bicycle riding and all two-wheel activities in the city of Glendale. So hopefully, these growing pains and the popularity of cyclists isn't going to result in anger directed towards the cyclist. In terms of the story polls, I'm a proponent of story polls, and I don't believe that the ordinance that we passed a few years ago really is strong enough. So I'm very happy that we're going to bring it back because I think we need to talk about it and refine it. And quite frankly, my vote will be to use story polls more. It's relatively inexpensive when you think of an overall project and the kind of insight that it gives neighbors and design professionals and so forth about what is going to be built on that hill or on that parcel, I think is very, very beneficial. So, and I kind of disagree with Ms. Friedman in terms of the CUP process because, quite frankly, my experience has been that you get the CUP, you've got X amount of square footage to work with, and now that's it. It's almost like the DRB now has to give up on the size of the home being built on the property. So anyway, I hope we can bring it back and further refine the hillside ordinance and all of the other applicable laws. Then my other comment has to do with Mr. Milano. As I've stated many times, Mr. Milano came into the city of Glendale along with hundreds of other people who invested in large, large apartment buildings. Single-family neighborhoods were pretty much destroyed